Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We're going to have the invocation and pledge given by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White. Commissioner White, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of the people who will be recognized this morning for great things in our community. We pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions today for our county. And as always, pray for members of our armed forces and our first responders, that you will guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for all of these blessings and give these thanks in your heavenly name. Amen.
And thank you, Commissioner White. This is a very special day for both the Board of County Commissioners and the people of Hillsborough County. It's our pleasure to present the 5th Annual Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. Commissioner White, would you like to tell us about the award and recognize the outstanding recipient we have today?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everybody. In January 2017, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved the creation of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award to honor an individual or group dedicated to preserving the county's natural resources. The award is named in honor of the 26th President of the United States. Known as the nation's first conservationist president, Theodore Roosevelt placed more than 200 million acres under public protection and doubled the number of sites in the national park system. It is in this spirit of conservation of our most precious environmental resources that we present this award today. First, I'd like to thank the members of the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program committees who made the nominations and recommended the recipient. I believe some of the members are here with us virtually today, and I'd like to recognize them. They are Jan Smith, the Chair, Sally Thompson, the Vice Chair, Jack Berlin, Joe Guidry, and I do want to note that both Mr. Berlin and Mr. Guidry also serve on the Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Advisory Board. We also have with us Joel Jackson, Michael Newitt, and Fred Webb. Thank you for your service, and thank you to other committee members who are not able to join us today. The work you do to protect the pristine areas of our county and helping us secure environmental gems that will endure for generations. So at this time, I am proud to announce that the recipient of the 2021 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award is Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. And I do want to note that since the creation of this award, this is the first group to have received the award. And I just want to highlight that I'm very proud of the work that this group has done with our community, for our community. So I would just like to see if we have Executive Director Debbie Evenson with us. President Stan—
I am.
Very good, thank you. President Stan Crowe.
I'm here.
Great. Treasurer Jim Ellis. And also, we should have Executive Committee members Brad Suter and Kim Byer.
Yes, good morning.
Our very own Kim Byer, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we couldn't make this presentation in person, but we're still going to make this a day you'll always remember. Today, you are making history. Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful is the first organization to be honored with this award, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, and it is indeed a significant milestone. A Keep America Beautiful affiliate, Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful, is led by a dedicated executive team and Board of Trustees. These community-oriented individuals and more than 19,000 spirited volunteers throughout the county are unafraid to get their hands dirty for the betterment of Hillsborough's natural treasures, water resources, and quality of life. They often go to hard-to-reach places to correct others' poor judgment and provide enhancements. Founded in 1989, this outstanding service organization last year alone removed over 450,000 pounds of trash and debris. They planted more than 8,000 trees and plants and hosted over 900 community improvement events. Between 2019 and 2020, the organization conducted more than 2,000 projects, beautified 7,820 acres of public lands and over 2,530 miles of public right-of-way, and educated an excess of 340,000 residents about reducing pollution and improving water quality. These extraordinary efforts preserve and protect the environment and build stronger stewardship and volunteerism. Here are just a few of Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful's labors of love. The Adopt a Road Program, the Great American Cleanup, the Hillsborough River and Coastal Cleanup, the After Gasparilla Cleanup, World Oceans Day, and the after fireworks cleanup that follows the Fourth of July. The organization enables local groups to make significant impacts throughout the community with a wide variety of projects, including litter abatement, illegal dump site removal, plantings, invasive plant removals, playground restoration, park beautification, and establishing green spaces and gardens. It is noteworthy that Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful's headquarters is located on a six-acre tract along the Hillsborough River in Tampa. But this isn't just any piece of land. South of Rivercrest Park, and known as the Rivercrest Park Edition, this is one of but a few ELAP parcels within city limits. Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful was involved in the transformation of an old bungalow on the property into what is now a vibrant education center. Other projects there include shoreline restoration, removal of exotic species, the addition of a portable dock and kayak launch, and the construction of a large deck in the back of the Center for Outdoor Education Workshops. A community garden is the most recent addition. These amenities are available for use by neighbors, volunteers, and students as they participate in hands-on activities, learning to grow fresh, healthy food, and schooling themselves in healthy eating practices. What's more, a perimeter trail is being constructed as part of the City of Tampa's Greenways and Trails Program. This is indeed a jewel for everyone, perfectly illustrating Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful's devotion to the community, the environment, and ELAP. Ms. Evenson, congratulations to you, your team, and the entire organization. All of you are a major reason that Hillsborough County is such an exceptional community. As part of this award, we have provided your organization with a beautiful picture of volunteers having a great time at the Reed Park Garden in that ELAP property that you put so much time and effort into. And I'm happy to see that it's on display today. In addition, a nice plaque is being made. It's my understanding that there may be a slight delay there. And Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful will be awarded $2,000 to choose an enhancement project at a Hillsborough County nature area of your choice. Also, Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful's name will be just the fifth added to a perpetual plaque that hangs in county center. And I'm going to just go off script for a moment and just remind everyone that these $2,000 awards were made possible by a generous contribution from the late Gus Munich to the ELAP program to support and sustain this award over time. So I'm thankful that we're able to provide that, thanks to Gus's generosity. So again, thank you for all the amazing work that you, your team, and volunteers do. And now I would like to turn it over for comments, starting with Ms. Evenson.
Thank you, Commissioner White, and the entire Board of County Commissioners for this honor of receiving this award. We're so excited to be the first organization to receive this, so thank you so much. I love that you included the picture here, taken at Reed Park, which is at Port the ELAP's property and home to our Environmental Education Center. We're proud that we've been able to make many changes on the property, as well as out throughout Hillsborough County. Our volunteers truly are the heart of the organization, and it's because of support from the community, like this receiving this award, that we're able to continue to grow. So thank you again so much for this award. We truly appreciate it, and we're going to be proud to display it here at our education center.
Very good. Well, it's well-deserved. Congrats again. And at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Crowe to say a few words.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner White. And on behalf of the Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful Board of Trustees, I would like to thank the entire Board of County Commissioners for this award. We are very, very proud to receive this. And I would also like to extend an invitation to you. I think you heard from the impressive statistics that were read there. We have at least one event going on pretty much every single day of the year, so I would invite you to come out and join us for any one of those events. I think you'll really enjoy yourself and leave the day feeling you've accomplished something, so please join us as your schedules allow. You also heard about all the wonderful things that have been done at the property at Reed Park, and I just want to recognize our couple of Executive Committee members that are on the call, Brad Suter with the City of Tampa and Kim Byer, who's with Hillsborough County. Our long-term partnerships with the city and the county are really what have made those impressive improvements at Reed Park possible. So just a huge shout-out to Brad and Kim. Thank you both. And again, thank you, Board of County Commissioners. We're very grateful for this award.
Well, thank you, everybody. Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful's services made a lasting impact on our community, and we are so proud to honor it today. This organization truly exemplifies dedication to preserving the county's natural resources. So, Madam Chair, at this time, I think it would be appropriate to see if any of our fellow commissioners would like to speak.
And they are lined up. So I'll go first and recognize Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. And it's just so great to see so many old friends with us today, both on the Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful organization that we are honoring for their work today, and the ELAP General Committee who brought this award forward. This is an amazing group of citizens we have together today that have been working for decades to keep our natural areas clean and green and to improve them just with volunteer labors of love. It's really amazing, and it's a very fitting award for the E.G. Simmons Award. And thank you, Commissioner White, for recognizing Gus Munich's contribution to this award. I see, you know, I know we were friends of his for a long time, but I see many of his friends in both of these groups with us today. And it lifts my heart that we can be honoring the work of all these people. I'm amazed, always, at the work of Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful when, at the end of one of their workdays, you see truckloads and dumpsters full of trash that they've pulled out of our parks and natural areas and left them looking beautiful again for the visitors that come behind them. That is really important work, and without these volunteers, our parks and preserves would really be the worst for it. So thanks to everyone for letting us celebrate this today and present this award.
Great. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And first of all, let me congratulate Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful on both the award, which I really do think is very special, but also on the really important work that you do day in and day out to keep our bay and our environment clean. It's fortuitous that we're giving this award on the eve of Earth Day, which is tomorrow. And I wanted to mention that Port Tampa Bay is hosting a port cleanup tomorrow. It's called the Great Port Cleanup. There's information about it on porttb.com, but if you feel inspired by Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful, this is a great way to go out and spend a few hours helping cleaning things up in our community. And again, congratulations to Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful on the award.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'll keep this short because we do have a long agenda today, but what's really exciting is to see the legacy that Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful has left to not only students, but all in our community. I see them quite frequently, working on Hillsborough River and in the parks, and Reed Park is a perfect example of a great collaboration. In the picture, I noticed my previous legislative aide, Monica Petrella, who left my office to go work for IFIS at the Extension Office and has been working on developing community gardens. So I am so pleased to see the legacy of this office, but also the legacy of Gus and all of us that are committed to keeping our Hillsborough beautiful, keeping Tampa Bay beautiful, and keeping our natural resources as pristine as we can. Thank you very much for all your work.
And it was really wonderful, I think, to have this group recognized as a group, but also in particular, this group, because they have done so much to protect our environment and our waterways. And I know that Commissioner Smith has been joined with them over decades out there cleaning. I've spent my time out there from time to time, and it's really a great activity to do during, especially during COVID, when you can do something outside and you can do it with a group and you can benefit the environment. And it's just wonderful, all-around, the work that's been done. So thank you for the Roosevelt Award, and it's just, it's great to recognize Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. And with that, we will move to our next proclamation, and that is being presented by Commissioner Harry Cohen. You're recognized, Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is Carrie Thatcher from Resolve on the connection today?
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning, Ms. Thatcher. Thank you for being here. This recognition addresses a concern that affects many residents in Hillsborough County. Every year, millions of couples face numerous challenges on their journey to parenthood. One of those challenges is infertility. According to the World Health Organization, between 48 million couples and 186 million individuals live with infertility globally, and it has an impact on their families and communities. The good news is that there is hope. The organization Resolve, the National Infertility Association, has been instrumental in helping people accomplish their dreams of building their families. It is dedicated, its dedicated staff helps ensure that all people who are challenged in their family-building journey will reach resolution. The organization empowers them with knowledge, support from the community, unity through advocacy, and inspiration to act. It is my pleasure to present, Ms. Thatcher, with this proclamation declaring Infertility Awareness Week. It reads, "Whereas, according to the CDC, 1 in 8 couples have trouble becoming pregnant or sustaining a pregnancy; and whereas, the World Health Organization and American Medical Association define infertility as a disease which affects women and men equally and does not discriminate based on race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, marital status, or socioeconomic level; and whereas, all residents who face challenges have a right to access numerous options when creating, developing, and nurturing their families; whereas, family-building options include adoption and medical treatment, such as in vitro fertilization and third-party reproduction; and whereas, cost and lack of insurance coverage are barriers for many residents in Hillsborough County to access the family-building options they need; and raising awareness of infertility and the challenges the community faces is the first step to removing these barriers; and whereas, in 2010, National Infertility Awareness Week became a federally-recognized health observance by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services; and whereas, Hillsborough County joins Resolve, the National Infertility Association, and dedicated volunteers, healthcare professionals, and members of the infertility and family-building community by participating in this vital promotion. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare April 18th to April 24th, 2021, as Infertility Awareness Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages residents and visitors to help organizations like Resolve to remove the stigmas and barriers that stand in the way of building families, empowering them to share their story, and find a community that cares. Executed this 21st day of April, 2021, signed by all seven county commissioners." And at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Thatcher if you would like to say a few words.
Absolutely. Commissioner Cohen, on behalf of Resolve, the National Infertility Association, and the over 33,000 women in Hillsborough County that experience infertility, I'd like to thank you and the entire Board of County Commissioners for commemorating National Infertility Awareness Week in Hillsborough County. Thank you for helping raise awareness and provide support to the 1 in 8 couples that have trouble conceiving or carrying a child. Together, we can change the conversation about infertility and support greater access to care for those trying to build their families.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. You know, these proclamations give us an opportunity to shine the light on challenges that people in our community are facing, and I'm glad that we were able to take some time out today to discuss this problem that affects so many families. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. And with that, we will move on to our next proclamation, presented by Commissioner Kimberly Overman. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Is Mr. Richard George, the president of Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay, here today?
Yes, I am, Commissioner.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us. I am pleased to present this proclamation, which explores a topic that's very important to every person. Financial literacy is an individual's ability to make informed decisions about their financial resources using the skills and knowledge that they possess. Adults, and especially young people, should have a strong foundation when it comes to financial stability. Hillsborough County-based businesses and organizations have played a significant role in educating people on the importance of financial literacy. Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay does a phenomenal job in providing and empowering their students with the confidence and understanding to take control of their futures and to achieve their dreams. In honor of the organization's work, I am pleased to present Mr. George with this proclamation declaring April as Financial Literacy Month. So I'd like to read the proclamation, and then I'll invite Mr. George to speak. It reads, "Whereas, as of 2020, the United States consumer debt is approximately $14 trillion, of which credit card debt exceeds $750 billion. And whereas, Americans owe more than $1.5 trillion in student loans and, on average, save only 7.6% of their income. And whereas, raising awareness about the importance of financial literacy and the need for effective financial education is a mission shared on a local and nationwide level. And whereas, public, consumer, community-based, and private-sector organizations throughout Hillsborough County work together to educate on personal finance issues and increase financial literacy for all residents of all ages. And whereas, Hillsborough County is committed to ensuring all residents are financially literate, responsible, and able to properly manage money, credit, debt, and the county supports initiatives that promote and advance financial literacy education. And whereas, Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay, the world's largest organization dedicated to teaching students about financial literacy, partners with businesses and teaching communities to strengthen educational practices by providing every student unparalleled connectivity to the business world. And whereas, originally founded as Youth Financial Literacy Day in 2000 and evolving into a month-long observation in 2010, Financial Literacy Month places the importance of learning about finances and the tools to learn about them right in the classroom. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare April 2021 as Financial Literacy Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to recognize the numerous organizations and educational resources available that offer financial planning and personal budgeting to those in need. Executed this 21st day of April, 2021, signed by all seven commissioners." Mr. George, thank you so much for your work and your leadership. Would you like to say a few words?
Of course. Thank you, Commissioner Overman and Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners for your continued leadership and vision. Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay is so proud of this recognition. As we celebrate Financial Literacy Month, we are reminded of the importance of financial literacy education, not just for the young people in our community, but the impact that it has in our Tampa Bay region. For 55 years, Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay has dedicated itself to prepare and inspire young people to succeed in the global economy. And as a pillar of our mission, financial literacy enriches the lives of the students we serve, providing greater economic opportunity, economic mobility, and economic equity. Now more than ever, financial literacy learning experience like J. A. Finance Park, which serves every Hillsborough County 8th grader, are vital for our next generation. Our board, staff, and volunteers will continue to work hard with our government, education, and business partners to move the needle for the economic empowerment in our community. J. A. Bizdown, J. A. Finance Park, and now our latest transformative high school model, 3DE, by Junior Achievement, will ensure a relative-engaging, authentic education for Hillsborough County young people. Commissioner, on behalf of Junior Achievement, we are proud to be associated with this prestigious recognition. Thank you.
And thank you for your great work. It is often very important for anyone that is attempting to purchase a home, build the wealth associated with a home, and it's one of the reasons why I offered financial planning and financial counseling my entire life before I got here, but also why we partner so much with those individuals that assist with the First-Time Home Buyer Program and the Down Payment Programs to help people build wealth in their life. Financial literacy is the core to success and stability for a majority of our family, and the work that you do at Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay is critical to the success of our citizens and our young people as they learn how to manage their affairs and look towards possibly becoming entrepreneurs in our local economy. Thank you so much. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone for all the great work that is being done out there to make Hillsborough County just a wonderful place to live and for your contributions to this community. And with that, we'll turn to Ms. Wise with the changes to the agenda.
Thank you. We have one item that has a revision or correction to the agenda. It's Commissioner Overman's item, Item F2 at 10:45. This is to direct staff to investigate acquiring the 769-acre parcel, known as the USF Northern Property, through the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program. Prepare letters of support for the Chair's signature to the ELAP General Committee to formally nominate the parcel and to rank it in accordance with the ELAP nomination and site-ranking process, and authorize staff to submit a response to the RFI by the May 24th deadline. At 10 o'clock, we have Item D1, which is to hold a public hearing to consider an amendment to allow exceptions to the modified irrigation schedule in the southern portion of the Water Resources Department service area for irrigation using alternative water sources, and also add additional properties to the modified irrigation restricted area. At 10 o'clock, Item D2 is also a public hearing to receive public comment and adopt a rate resolution to establish the Water Resources Department's fee and charges for customers receiving potable water, wastewater, and reclaimed water services to increase the rates for these services by 4% per year for four consecutive years. Item E1 at 10:15 is the emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. And Item F2, Commissioner Overman's item, at 10:45— And Item F2, Commissioner Overman's item at 10:45, to direct staff to investigate acquiring the 769-acre parcel known as the USF Northern Property through the Jane K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program. Prepare letters of support for the Chair's signature to formally nominate the parcel and to rank it in accordance with the ELAP nomination and site ranking process, and authorize staff to submit a response to the RFI by the May 24th deadline. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Myers. Okay, and with that, if we can just please, seeing no further discussion, record our votes. I'm not used to just saying, "Record your vote" anymore.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Having everyone here for the second time now is a great thing, so it's good to see everybody. I'll start that before we go to the public comments. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time that when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You will be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis. The audio call-in will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it's received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly. And with that, we'll start with Lunell McAllister.
Good morning, Commissioners. In April, Floridians, this is Lunell McAllister. In April, Floridians around the state pause to remember the 15,000 mothers, sons, husbands, and fathers who would suffer and die when our state asked them to defend her against an armed invasion. Only two-thirds would return. Hundreds of men and boys, children, soldiers left the singly soil of Hillsborough County by order of their state to defend our community, many who did not return. While these men and boys were suffering and dying, their family and homes were bombed and invaded, including the theft of an Masonic tool at the Masonic Lodge in Hillsborough County. Today, we remember. As has been the case in other tragedies, our community promised never to forget their sacrifice. We erected a memorial to keep their loss evergreened in our mind. That memorial is now gone, but we remember. Captain John T. Leslie wounded. Sergeant James H. Brandon POW. Private Robert J. Carney died. Private James M. Collins POW. Third Lieutenant Jesse Collins wounded POW. Private Thomas Cochrane killed in action. Private Stafford Davis died. Private William Dees died. Private Joseph Eadie died. Private Thomas J. Finley POW died. Private Henry Futch died. Private George W. Griffin wounded. Private George W. D. Hancock wounded POW. Corporal Joseph Harris POW died. Private James Haskin POW. Musician William Hurd POW. First Lieutenant Charles W. Henry wounded POW. Private John N. Henry POW. Private James M. Johnson wounded in action. Private Thomas W. Johnson POW. Private William M. Lemax POW. Private Robert P. Lewis POW. Private Herm Archibald McLeod wounded in action. Amputee Private Samuel A. Miley wounded in action. First Lieutenant Francis M. Mitchell killed in action. Corporal Simeon B. Moody killed in action. Private John D. Moody died. Private James E. Pump pine wounded in action. Musician Benjamin L. Rice killed in action. Private Michael F. Robles POW died. Private George Robinson died. Fifth Sergeant Jasper Sloan wounded in action POW died. Private William H. Sparkman wounded in action POW. Private T. K. Spencer POW. Second Lieutenant William E. Sweat wounded in action. Private Joseph Tully died. Private Alexander J. Watson POW. Private John A. Weeks wounded in action. Amputee POW. Private Willoughby Witten POW. Private Albert Witten POW died. Private James Wiggins POW. Fourth Corporal Calvi L. Wilder wounded in action POW. Private John W. Wilder wounded in action POW died. Private Thomas Willis POW. Private Matthew H. Williams POW. Private Enick Collins wounded in action. Private Henry D. Cottrell POW. Private Robert F. Fletcher POW died. First Sergeant George Johnson wounded in action.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Please, your time is up. Your time is up, please. Thank you. We'll move to Jeannie Monger now.
Hi. Hello, yes, my name is Jeannie Monger. I'm addressing Item F2. I'm an organizer with Save the USF Forest Preserve, as well as a doctoral candidate and teaching assistant in the Integrative Biology Department at USF. As a private citizen of Florida, an eighth-generation Floridian, and a plant ecologist, I am strongly opposed to the university's recent RFI solicitation for development proposals for the Preserve and adjacent golf course and USF Riverfront Park, which together make up what is known as the Northern Property. Further, I am vehemently opposed to any development that may result from this RFI or any future RFI. This land boasts 31 acres of critically imperiled sandhill habitat and 500 acres of wetland that make up a portion of an outstanding Florida waterway, the Hillsborough River. At least 20 endangered or threatened species call the property home, and it is the lynchpin to a critical wildlife corridor between neighboring conservation lands of Cypress Creek and the Lower Hillsborough River Preserve. This land also contains nine known archaeological sites and several other understudied sites of Native American cultural heritage, including sites on the golf course. The Preserve is an integral, core research and teaching facility for multiple departments within USF, including integrative biology, geosciences, anthropology, public health, engineering, and others. The loss of this resource as a university facility would profoundly diminish the overall quality of education that USF students receive. The property also contributes to clean water, clean air, flooding mitigation, and the sequestration of greenhouse gas emissions within the greater Tampa Bay area. The property as it exists today is therefore key to cleaning and filtering pollutants from the water that flows through the Hillsborough River and into Tampa Bay. Destroying or damaging these wetlands would limit our ability to mitigate environmental catastrophes like Piney Point and the ongoing climate crisis. This land is too important to the sustainable future of the Tampa Bay region, the state of Florida, and our beautiful wildlife to be destroyed for further urbanization. Save the USF Forest Preserve is calling on USF to rescind its RFI, protect the Northern Property in perpetuity with a conservation easement, and designate a professional full-time land manager for the Forest Preserve. We hope that this can be achieved through involvement by ELAP. I ask, too, that if ELAP does acquire the property, that the more than 50-year legacy of scientific research and education be allowed to continue unabated. Thank you.
Thank you. Cortland Cooper?
Yes, my name is Mr. Cortland Cooper. I am reaching out to you all in regards to the mask mandates. I am strongly opposed to you all extending this, and I would like to request that you all end up halting the mask mandates. Back in November of 2020, I tested positive for COVID-19, and two weeks later, I ended up in the hospital with blood clots in my lungs. And I could tell you right now, I'm still recovering from the blood clots in my lungs, and it's very hard for me to wear a mask because of that. Also, even if there were certain masks that is better for me, like a Publix, and even they don't have those masks anymore. So, I'm really requesting you all to please halt the mask mandates. I don't wish anybody going through what I'm going through right now. Another thing is, I went inside Crate and Barrel over by International Mall. They denied me entrance. They denied me inside their establishment because I did not have a mask, and I told them I have a pulmonary embolism, and they still did nothing about it. There are businesses denying people service with, even with a medical condition, to wear a card for them to wear a mask. So, I am strongly encouraging you and requesting you all, pleading to you with my life, to halt these mask mandates. That's it.
Thank you. Mary Keith?
Yes, good morning. My name is Mary Keith. I am speaking regarding the F2 item on the agenda today, and I'm speaking on behalf of Tampa Audubon Society. I'm not going to repeat Commissioner Overman's statements that were in the paper regarding the acquisition of that USF North property by ELAP. We certainly encourage that very much. I would just like to add that there are at least 194 species of birds that have been documented from Lettuce Lake, immediately adjacent, that are most assuredly using a lot of that property as well, and that there is a very large, significant bird colony in Lake Forest, which is just a mile or so north and contiguous width through that Cypress Creek corridor. And that colony includes the federally endangered Woodspore. It includes state-threatened low-blue herons and tricolored herons, as well as numerous other, and hengies, ibis, bitterns, et cetera. So, I would just like to add that data to the overall look at trying to include this USF North property in the ELAP and make that Cypress Creek to Lettuce Lake corridor continuous and protected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine Quinn?
Christine Quinn has not called in, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Paul Michael?
Hi, this is Paul Michael on Nine Eagles. Thanks for having me. I have a question, comment regarding COVID-19. This is primarily a question, comment, perhaps for Dr. Holt and the medical team, but also for the Commissioners, and it's regarding the use of the percent positivity. The CDC guidance now that people are vaccinated is that vaccinated people do not need to get tested if they have no symptoms, even if they have been exposed to people in the office or just, excuse me, just in passing. And that's very different than what we used to have, which is the complete opposite, which is prior to vaccination, if you were exposed in the office or just in passing, somebody in the hallway or a restaurant or at the gym, you would get tested. And that would make sense, because we were trying to figure out if people needed to be quarantined. Now, prior to vaccinations, that resulted in probably, for a long time, 95% of the tests came back negative, resulting in a 5% positivity. Makes sense. We hovered around 5% for a long time, because 95% of the people were getting tested, were healthy, they had just been exposed, or they were going to get on an airplane, and they needed to take a test. But now we have eight, you know, eight-plus million people vaccinated, which is excellent. But those vaccinated people, due to the CDC guidance, are no longer getting tested if they're exposed, because the guidance is, if you're vaccinated, you feel well, you have no symptoms, there's absolutely no need to get tested. So, we've removed those people from the testing pool. All those negatives, that 95% of the people that were getting tested have been removed, leaving only sick people who are physically sick with COVID to go get the test. So, the positivity has to rise. It's statistically and mathematically going to rise. 5% positivity is not really achievable at this point, because you've taken away eight million people and increasing. Every single person who gets vaccinated is no longer getting tested. So, I think it's important to realize as we watch the positivity go up, that it's not necessarily due to increasing spread and this situation getting worse. It's actually due to vaccinated people not needing to get tested if they're healthy. And so, my question or comment for Dr. Holt is, if there's anything that I'm saying that's not correct, then I encourage you to explain how removing the negative tests, all of those people that previously tested negative, how removing those would not increase positivity. And if what I'm saying is accurate, then please, you know, encourage the Commissioners to not get too concerned with the increasing positivity, because it's actually looking at 10%. It's a completely different statistic, because now only physically sick people are getting tested, so it stands to reason that the positivity will increase tremendously.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Your time is up. Debbie Rucker?
Debbie and Steve have not signed into the public comment.
Thank you. Steve Kona?
Steve has not signed up as well.
Thank you. Susan Nicely?
I am calling in about the transportation tax as well as the South Bay Ferry. The South Bay Ferry will become another one of those transportation dreams that services very few people for $36 million, and we will be subsidizing it for years to come. It will service very few people. There's no place in MacDill, once you get dropped off at the pier, to be shuttled around. MacDill is a very large Air Force Base. Please stop wasting our dollars on it. And as far as putting another transportation tax in, show that you've been spending your money wisely, rather than these crazy pipe dreams that Tampa is not set up for. I can guarantee you that there will be a number of people who will fight this tax tooth and nail with large amounts of money. Thank you for your time and your consideration, although you don't even listen to these statements.
Thank you. Yemel Lawrence?
Yemel has not joined the meeting.
Thank you. Elena G.?
Elena has left. She has signed off.
Thank you. Diana Clark?
And Diana has not joined us. Diana has not joined as well.
Tannis Ketch?
Yes, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of Tannis Ketch. I'm speaking on behalf of Tannis Ketch for the B2 item. She's an elderly woman. She has been at her residence for 51 years since 1970. She is now 75 years old. She is 100% disabled veteran's widow on limited income of only Social Security. Unfortunately, due to the veterans rule, she never received my father's benefits, because he died before the 10 years required for the widow to be eligible for those benefits. He fought for 15 years trying to receive this 100% veteran's disability rating, but then he was awarded it, then died before the 10-year requirement for my mom to receive it. So, in reference to Item B2, she is on eight acres of property, zoned agricultural, and on a lake. The formula for the, it's going from $38 a year to $582 a year. I don't think they thought the formula enough for large acre properties that don't really impede stormwater runoff, and they're also zoned agricultural land and on a lake for the water to run off to. The hardship for the limited-income elderly and veterans widows of those properties. I have been financially helping her, keeping her in her home for the home of 51 years, and the excessive increase is greatly affecting her able to stay in her home. The hardship exemptions that they're looking at B2 are not enough. They need to have some for veteran's widows, for properties that are zoned agricultural, large acreage properties for the elderly, and these taxable values are ridiculous. There's not many homes anymore that are $100,000, especially in this market. And the income, they need to increase that, because 100% is only $12,880 for the federal poverty level. That's too low. So, they need to revisit this hardship exemption for acreage of properties, maybe over five acres or something, veteran's widows, zoned agricultural areas, and the elderly, because this assessment is becoming ridiculous. because this assessment is becoming ridiculous. It's going from $580 now to $733 in 2025. Uh, the formula that they're using doesn't take, it takes all the structures, driveways, pool decks, walkways, and it's ridiculous. We're not impeding any type of stormwater on eight acres of property. So the formula needs to be readdressed and they need to have a hardship exemption again for acreage, veteran widows, zoned agricultural areas, and the elderly. Thank you very much.
Can you please state your name for the record? Can you please state your name?
I'm Victor Catch, Tannis Catch's son. Victor Catch, Tannis Catch's son.
Okay. So you're speaking, I see you're the next, next speaker and, um, so I wasn't gonna, so I won't call you then. We'll be handling that item at, um, uh, D2. Um, so we'll, we'll, um, take your words into consideration at that time. Um, thank you.
D2, years and dollars, B2, what?
And the, D2. Later in the-
D2, okay. And that's, what time is that one?
Yep.
What time is that?
It, well, it's set for, uh, 10:00 AM. It could be anytime after 10:00.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then Karen Machowski?
Uh, yes, um, Karen Machowski, uh, representing Hillsborough County Democratic Environmental Caucus of Florida. Dear Madam Chair, Camps and County Commissioners, 22nd is the 51st anniversary of Earth Day. We appreciate the approval of directing county attorneys to investigate all legal options stemming from Piney Point Gibson Stack failure. Piney Point environmental disaster was not an accident. Stack failure was sadly expected and predicted by H.R. Cole Holding, FDET, Manatee Board of County Commissioners, U.S. Representative Vern Buchanan, and many environmentalist groups, act organizations, and activists. We recommend the following to ensure that our Hillsborough County water, residents, land value, tourism industry, fishing industry are protected. Inspect liners and infrastructure for all Gibson stacks in Hillsborough County. Can all Gibson stacks sustain a direct hurricane level three or higher impact without infrastructure failure? Evaluate capacity levels for all active Gibson stacks and overflow ponds. Do all stacks and overflow ponds have a capacity to hold 50 inches of rain in 48 hours or multiple events during hurricane season, providing 200 inches of rain in six weeks? Evaluate surety bonds for active and retired Gibson stacks. Piney Point has been closed since 2001. Financial burden has been placed on Manatee County taxpayers due to bankruptcy. Now expected $200 million on Florida taxpayers. Does Hillsborough County have financial security in the event of Mosaic bankruptcy? We recommend to create a task force with Polk, Hardy, and Manatee Counties to prepare regional strategy for anticipated Gibson stack failures. What mitigation options are there? What would happen to the Florida aquifer for another Gibson stack sinkhole? Piney Point's failed water quality, or failed water quality discharge or processing water has created a plume into McKay Bay where Tampa Bay Water Desalination Plant Pipeline are located. What are the long-term expectations for water production, fishing industry, tourism, coastal residents? Pass a moratorium for all new phosphate plant permits or amendments to existing DRA until Piney Point investigation, exit plan, and financial burden has been determined. Request an impact study regarding deep water injection well to our Florida aquifer. Pass a moratorium for deep injection well for storage of Gibson stack, processing wastewater.
And with that, that concludes our general-
Oh, and then-
Oh, so, go ahead. I'm sorry. I thought you were finished.
Um, no, I was just scrolling down. We appreciate that you, our county board of county commissioners, will be working to address these issues. And then if I have a few more time, I also support Commissioner Overman, I believe, F2 regarding the US Forest Preserve, uh, to be evaluated by the county for, uh, ELAP purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and with that, we will conclude our, uh, general public comments and we'll move to, uh, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner White, Commissioner, uh, making the motion, Commissioner Overman-
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear the motion.
Okay. We had a, Commissioner White made the motion, seconded by Commissioners Overman and Cohen. We're fast here. And with that, if we can, seeing no discussion, if we can move to our vote?
Motion carried seven to zero.
Great. Now we will move to our regular agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
I just, you recognizing me?
Yes.
Okay.
You're recognized.
Okay. I'd just like to, uh, thank our county administrator, Ms. Wise, for putting on our agenda A25 and A26 as it relates to two floating holidays for our employees, uh, which is much needed during this pandemic. So thank you for thinking of the employees and what they have gone through an entire year and still the county has sustained in delivering our services to our citizens. So thank you so much, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. And thank you. It is really our great staff who has gotten us through this pandemic and I'm so pleased. Thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you. And yes, Commissioner Myers, and we're all grateful to the staff. And I think there was no, uh, obvious discussion among here when it was put on the consent agenda because we all realize how hard people have been working and how much it was needed. But, uh, thank you for highlighting, uh, that at this time and, uh, it was a, uh, a good idea. We know we've, um, had a lot of extra hours, uh, put through this, um, this time. And, um, with that, we will move to the regular agenda.
Yes, we have a few minutes before 10 o'clock. So our first item is another ELAP item, item B1. This is for a hun- sorry, 20 acres in the Fishhawk portion, South Hillsborough County Wildlife Corridor. And Forrest Turberville will present this item to you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And, uh, good morning Commissioners, Forrest Turberville, Conservation Environmental Lands Management. Uh, the item for you today is comprised of, uh, two parts. Uh, the first is to request your approval by, uh, supermajority vote, a contract with Mini C. Hagan individually and as trustee of the Mini C. Hagan Trust dated November 16th, 2012, to acquire approximately 20 acres for $1,200,000 located within the Fishhawk South Hillsborough Wildlife Corridor ELAP site and to authorize staff to complete the transaction in accordance with the contract. The contract includes leaseback of the existing residents to the seller at a nominal rate for $10 a year for up to 20 years. The purchase price is approximately 105% of the highest appraised value of the two appraisals prepared for the county. And in accordance with Section 125 Florida statutes, the board is required to approve this contract by a supermajority vote. Capital acquisition costs of $1,230,000 and capital management costs not to exceed $20,000 will be funded by existing ELAP bond proceeds and ELAP ad valorem funds. Additional, uh, annual operating costs will not exceed $3,000 for this fiscal year and can be accommodated with the, within the current ELAP management budget. Staff will include additional operating costs as part of the next annual budget submission. This action does not increase the current budget or the ELAP acquisition or ELAP restoration accounts. The second, uh, portion is to request your approval of a budget amendment to realign $20,000 within the ELAP Bond 2019 Fund currently budgeted in the ELAP Acquisition Project to the ELAP Restoration CIP Project in order to provide funding for site fencing, initial fire lane installation, and initial exotic plant control. That's the item and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we have a motion to move approval by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman. And seeing no further discussion, could you please record your vote?
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Wise, um, I guess we have less than a minute.
Less than a minute. Let's see how we do. Um, the next item is to receive and accept the Stormwater Management Program Hardship Exemption Report, item B2. The board had asked us to come back with this hardship program and so this item is going to be presented to you for your consideration. Josh Bellotti from Engineering and Operations will present this for you.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. Uh, this item is a proposed low-income hardship program for the county's stormwater assessment. Uh, as Bonnie mentioned, um, when the 2019 stormwater rates were adopted, the board requested that staff come back with a proposal to address the impact of those rate increases on low-income households through a hardship exemption program. Uh, in your backup material, you'll find a report from the county's consultant examining this type of program, uh, of which there are currently only two in the state of Florida, Jacksonville and the city of Tampa, and recommendations for establishing and implementing a hardship exemption program in Hillsborough County. Uh, the focus of the proposed hardship exemption program, uh, is to assist qualified owner occupants of single-family residential properties to maintain their homeownership. Uh, as detailed in the report, the qualifications for eligibility are twofold. Property criteria, which consists of a single-family residence, which is owner occupied and with a homestead exemption, and a taxable value of less than $100,000 after exemptions, and income-based criteria, which consists of the total household income at or below 100% of the federal poverty level. The Engineering and Operations Department has partnered with Social Services and with Communications to develop a plan for outreach to potentially eligible residents, intake of applications, and verification of eligibility. Should the board wish to proceed with establishing this program, uh, this agenda item directs the county attorney's office to draft an amendment to the county's Stormwater Ordinance 89-27. Uh, this draft amendment will be brought back to the board and a date scheduled for a public hearing to adopt the amended ordinance establishing the hardship exemption program. Uh, separately, this summer, staff will bring to the board the annual public hearing to set the stormwater assessment rates. Uh, and at that time, we'll also provide an overview on the program activities in terms of maintenance, repairs, and capital projects, uh, and highlight accomplishments. Uh, if you have any questions regarding the proposed hardship program, I'll be happy to take them at this time. Uh, and we also have our consultant available if there are any questions regarding the report.
Okay, this is a, uh, public hearing and we have, um, no, no one signed up for this. We have a couple of, uh-
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this is not a public hearing.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, so we would just go to board discussion at this time and, uh, sorry.
Yes, ma'am, item B2.
Okay. I had it listed down here under that, so that's why I was a little confused with no names. Okay, thank you. And, uh, with that, if we can move to board discussion, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you very much, um, to the entire stormwater team for really looking at a way that we can fairly address our needs to the residents to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to protect our environment and our stormwater and our, and our property and communities. Because that, that impacted, greatly impacts a lot of our, of our residents, not having enough stormwater resources and management. But I think it's also important to make sure that we recognize there are individuals with, on fixed income or in circumstances that are critically difficult for them to be able to participate in, in bearing the cost of this infrastructure investment. So I want to thank the, um, the team and move to accept the report regarding the homestead exemption.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, was that seconded by Commissioner Myers? Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. And, um, seeing no further, uh, board discussion, um, we will do a, uh, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And so now, sorry for that confusion there. When I just saw this open list here, I was getting a little confused. Okay, thank you. Ms. Wise?
Uh, thank you. The next one, item D1, is a public hearing. This is, um, also pursuant to the board request to come back with a modification to the irrigation schedule for the southern portion of, of the water restriction area. And we have Hank Ennis from the county attorney's office to present us and take us through the public hearing.
Commissioners, Hank Ennis with the county attorney's office. This is an amendment to your water irrigation ordinance. Uh, if you'll recall, back in December 2020, we adopted one-day-a-week irrigation in the southern portion of the county to deal with water pressure issues, in that we included domestic well water and surface water in those restrictions. However, domestic well water and surface water does not affect the water pressure issues that we're addressing in the South County area. Therefore, we are removing the domestic well water and surface water restrictions in the South County area with this amendment to the ordinance. Uh, in addition, we are adding the Creek Ridge Preserve subdivision, which is 194 lots that is currently under construction at this time. It's expected that these home sites will be fully developed prior to the expiration of the modified irrigation restrictions. And Commissioners, this is a public hearing.
Okay. This is a public hearing and, uh, I see that there is no one signed up to speak. Is that true? There's no one on the line or?
There is no one on the line for this, uh, agenda item. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, we have a motion to move the item by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I am glad to see that we can exempt those who use alternative water sources from this, um, these restrictions. And I am hoping that we, uh, we won't need to ha- hold these restrictions all the way to, uh, the end of 2022. I think we might be able to lift them sooner than that. Water is the most basic service we provide to our citizens. And we have now lowered the level of service of water that we deliver only to our customers in South County. This is an inequitable lowering of county water services just to these citizens who live south of the Alachia River. We are having to do this to these citizens because we are that close to the limits of our infrastructure because this county has irresponsibly, in my view, allowed development to outstrip the infrastructure in South County and then made these citizens suffer the consequences of the county's failure to manage growth along with infrastructure. These are the same citizens who are suffering the consequences of mismanaged growth that has stuck them with overcrowded roads and overcrowded schools and now we're giving them less water. Um, I'm the only commissioner up here who is being put on these extra water restrictions. So I feel like I should speak for my neighbors in South County and say, we understand when we are all asked to pitch in and conserve our natural resources for the greater good of the environment and the whole community, to reduce, reuse, recycle for the good of the planet or the community. But that's not what's happening here. And I find it galling that this part of the county alone is being asked to use less water because in this part of the county, developers have been allowed to build too much, too fast, overrunning the capacity of our infrastructure. I'm hearing from my neighbors that, you know, they have $6,000 worth of sod in their yard and they're not able to water in the same way that the rest of the people in, in the county are. Thankfully, our county is now waking up to this problem. This administration and this Board of County Commissioners is now looking at ways we can better manage growth to provide infrastructure concurrently with development on several fronts, schools, transportation, parks, fire, rescue, and water. And in the case of water, we are legally required by state statute to ensure that we can provide water concurrently with development. Water concurrency means not just that we keep everybody from dying of thirst, but that we keep our ecosystem functioning at a high level without overpumping our permits and we keep our citizens free from onerous unfair water use restrictions and provide all our customers a consistent standard level of service equitably throughout the county. So I just want to assure the public that our county is, right now, working toward a process of ensuring water concurrency. And that is listed in the future items at the end of this agenda as something that will be coming back to this board. And I want to thank our water utilities staff for stepping up and being willing to work with our planning and growth management staff towards this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further, uh, board discussion, uh, at this time, and I believe, do we have a, a motion on this by Commissioner White and seconded by Commissioner Over- on this by Commissioner White and seconded by Commissioner Overman? Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is item D2. This is also a public hearing to receive comment regarding the increases in the water, wastewater, reclaimed water rates, and George Cassidy and Beth Chanel will present this item to you.
Good morning, commissioners and Madam Chair, George Cassidy, Public Utilities. I'm going to share my screen and have a brief little overview for item D2, which is a public hearing, to consider a rate plan over the next four years, a 4% per year for four-year plan, to fund necessary operations, maintenance, capital, infrastructure, and programs designed to protect groundwater supplies, both septic-to-sewer program and also our LPSS conversion plan. I thought it would be important to review quickly our core services, our core mission. And if we look at what the department does, it's pretty, pretty simple. It's providing drinking water, it's collecting and treating wastewater, and it's returning reclaimed water back to the community for reuse purposes, and mostly that's irrigation. And we take our mission very seriously. We objectively are protecting public health and safety. We are stewards of the environment. We want to make sure that we're doing everything according to our regulatory requirements, making sure that our customer satisfaction is at a high level. We find that, you know, objectively, we want to make sure that we're providing these services in a fiscally responsible manner, that we're taking advantage of all the cost-cutting opportunities we can find so that we've got value for the services that we provide our customers. And in the end, we want to plan, we want to sustain, and we want to improve on the services that we do provide. So from our core services and from our mission statement, we develop drivers for utility sustainability. There's operations and maintenance dependability. There's preservation of our assets. There's efficiency of operation. It's a cost-effective approach to delivering those services, ensuring capacity availability for both our current and our future customers. We find that's, you know, very important for sustainability. And we certainly want to leverage technology to improve how we deliver our services to the public, and of course, always protecting public health and safety. I want to dive into each of these elements a little, a little more to give us a backdrop on what these drivers are for sustainability. Operations and maintenance, that's our day-to-day service delivery. That's our day-to-day business operation, whether it's meeting, reading meters, whether it's talking to customers on, on the phone, starting and stopping service, and certainly operating our plants and our infrastructure, that day-to-day operations and maintenance dependability, super important. Preservation of assets, we have a lot of moving parts. We've got a lot of pipeline, we've got a lot of pumps. I'd like to point out that some of the challenges that we face in our day-to-day operation, which is this pump that you see in the picture, it's covered and draped in this mop rag, some of the challenges that we find day-to-day are the things that our customers put down the drain. In this particular case, flushable wipes for us are a tremendous issue, tremendous problem. The manufacturers of flushable wipes say they're flushable, and they are, but what they do is they combine in big mats downstream, they clog infrastructure, they clog pipes, it's a big problem for us. So we have to develop programs to efficiently take care of our infrastructure, make sure that it's operable and available. Efficiency of operation, we want continuous improvement in our operation. We want to always be approaching our business, how can we do it better? How can we do it more efficiently? And this is a, this is a really good illustration of some of the cost efficiencies that we've found over the last couple of years. Beth Chanel has championed this with solid waste department, Kim Byer. We take bio-solids, previously a waste byproduct of the wastewater treatment plant operation, co-mingle that with yard waste, which is a waste product. We combine those things to compost and create a soil amendment that is in high demand. So again, taking a prior waste product, leveraging the opportunity to develop, you know, a valuable product, reducing the cost of our operations, it's been highly effective. Ensuring capacity availability for current future customers, I mean, that is very important to us. We're required by the regulatory agencies to have sufficient capacity of water and wastewater to serve our customers, both present and future. We're looking at over the horizon and saying, you know, how many more customers do we expect? Our obligation is to make sure that we've got that capacity available to them. Leveraging technology, I've said this on a number of occasions, we've watched the technology evolution over the last couple of years provide significant benefits to our operation. This picture is showing our operations staff monitoring the pulse, if you will, of our water distribution system. We're able to look at pressure and flow within the entire system. We know what's happening in the distribution system. That's important for us to be able to respond to small issues before they become big problems. Very important. And of course, protecting health and safety, that is our number-one priority. We test and test and test again our water and our wastewater to make sure that we're compliant with the regulations, that we're, they're meeting those expectations for public health and safety. We have a certified laboratory. We test over 70,000 times during the course of the year, as thousands on a weekly basis. We are, we're proud of what we do, and we are good at what we do. So from our core business statement, our mission statement, those things that make us sustainable, we developed our priority funding needs, and I think it's important to dive into why are we driving towards a 4% per year for four-year increase? Well, you know, to us, it is a reality. Since 2015, we've added 6,000 on average, 6,000 new customers per year. That's across the entire service area. We've, we've talked a lot about South County, but the fact is that Northwest is growing, Central is growing, the South portion, portion of our service area is growing. So if you, if you do the math, from 2015 to today, it's almost 40,000 new customers that we have had to bring online and serve. Over that time period, our cost of operations has increased about 2% per year, and I will add too that our, our employee, our employees, the number of employees have increased by about 40 over that timeframe, so roughly one employee for every thousand new customers that we brought online. Repair and replacement of assets. We've got a significant asset inventory, $1.2 billion. You know, the, the program that we've got to take care of that is our repair and replacement program. You know, the easiest way to describe this is, these are mechanical parts, mechanical and moving pieces. There is a lifespan that you expect out of, out of your infrastructure, much in the same as you would drive your car and expect at some point in time, you've got to trade it in and, and retire the old car. We've got pumps, we've got pipes that, you know, they may last 20, 30, 50, 70 years, but there's a point in time where we have to plan proactively to replace it or we deal with outages. If you look at our total asset inventory across the entire service area, it's $1.2 billion. The recommended amount of reinvestment is about $60 million per year. We are well short of that. We invest less than $40 million. We've got a gap. With each successive year, that gap grows larger. And of course, down in the South part of the county, we know, we know the extreme growth is taking place, and so we do need new water and new wastewater capacity in the South County. We shared during the workshop that in the next five years, we do expect 23,000 new customer connections in the next five years. Groundwater protection and septic-to-sewer are very important. That's gaining a lot of momentum across the state. Just in our service area alone, not including the city of Tampa, not including other portions of the unincorporated area or plant city, there are 26,000 septic tanks in our service area, Northwest and South Central. We have, we have proposed within this rate plan a modest beginning to the septic-to-sewer program of 500 homes per year, based on the estimated typical cost of conversion, it's about $10 million annually. We've included that in our rate plan. I would add too, at this point in time, that it looks like there's some opportunity for us to have additional funding separate from this through, through the stimulus, through the American Recovery Act. There's also, money's available still pending from the BP settlement that would be available to do the septic-to-sewer and, and help us out considerably and advance this program. And then there's the low-pressure sewer system conversion in Ruskin and Wy Moma. This rate plan that we're proposing provides for 300 of those systems per year for the next five years at an estimated cost of $5 million per year. So these are the priority funding areas driven by our sustainability goals, driven by our, our need to basically continue a high level of service to our, to our customers. So what is the plan? Well, we brought the plan to you in 2019. It was a six-year, 4% per year plan covering those priority funding areas. The board did approve the first two years, and, and with that, they said, "Come back to us at a later date and provide the justification." And so here we are. What we found with those first two years is that did help us with the operations and maintenance cost increases. It did not do anything for our renewal and replacement program. It did not provide the funding for water wastewater treatment plant expansion, that capacity needs. It did not provide septic-to-sewer, and it did not provide the LPSS. So what does that look like? What does that look like the first year? And I provided this little overview of maybe how the distribution of the 4% increase, how that would look across a typical bill. And so we're looking at a, a bill that would be 6,000 gallons of water use, 6,000 gallons of wastewater generation. So that bill currently would stand at $85 per month. That first, the, the next bucket that you see, which is titled Price Index, the board approved our annual automatic price index back in June of 2020, along with increasing the impact fees, which were, were very necessary. We approved the index through 2025, and that index follows a cost-of-living consumer price index, published index, and is intended to keep pace with those inflationary cost increases that we see year to year. That by itself doesn't get us caught up, doesn't make us whole for where we stand today with needing additional funding to address these priority funding areas. So the 4% that you see is sprinkled across these buckets. We've got 64 cents that are going to be applied to operational increases. We've got 59 cents of that increase that would go to R and R, and $1.38 for funding the new water and wastewater plants, and then, you know, the residual amount for our septic-to-sewer and LPSS conversion. In total, the 4% accounts for $2.73 per month, based on the first-year incremental increase. And then following in 2023, '24, and '25, you see that those increases gradually increase to a little bit over $3 per month additionally in 2025. And we talk about, you know, providing value for the services that we deliver, and I think, you know, the best that I can tell you is that in this chart, these are our neighboring utilities, counties and cities. Those were County Falls, right in the middle of the pack. We're not the cheapest, and we're not the most. I will tell you that our rate consultant advises us that most, if not all, of these utilities and these municipalities are, they either have planned increases or are looking to increase in the near future. So I think our relative position in this chart stays mostly the same. One last thing that I would like to add is that we did get feedback during our briefings, we did get feedback from, from residents that were emailing your offices about limited income. And we believe that, you know, there was a strong desire to develop a discount for eligible, eligible income-based residents that struggle, especially in this last pandemic year, struggle to pay their bills. And so we reached out to social services, we reached out to the stormwater team, and we, we've got a plan that we would like to recommend to you that would recognize the hardest hit by the economy and mirror something that our social services does for eligibility in terms of income requirements and also the stormwater program. And we would like to suggest a $5, $5 per month discount based on the, on the user charges in our bill, which total $25. So with a $5 discount off of that user rate per month, and that would be about $60 per year for eligible employees. We're looking at employees, excuse me, eligible residents. That would be 150% of the federal poverty level guideline that social services use. And oh, by the way, Audrey Ziegler with social services has been wonderful to work at with. She's really helped us understand eligibility requirements and what would be a good plan and what would be consistent, both with her programs and also what the, the stormwater team has developed. So I would offer that up. We're not ready at this point to make that part of this. We still need to craft some language to go into an ordinance change, but with your approval and concept, we could bring something back, maybe as soon as one of the May meetings, and, and bring that to you so we can go ahead and present that for approval. That would be in the form of another public hearing because it would require a modification to this rate ordinance. And with that, I'd like to also end with those residents, those customers that struggle to pay their bills. We have a program in place right now, working with social services, where we're already working with those hardest hit by the pandemic. We have CARES money that has been, you know, a wonderful tool in the toolbox to be able to help support those customers without being shut off because of lack of payment. So we've got a nice participation coming in. We've been able to help a number of our customers. I think we have, I think we're somewhere near $700,000 in support through customers that struggle to pay their bill, their water bill. So with that, that concludes my presentation. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. And this is a public hearing. We have two speakers signed up, so we'll go to them at this time. Shanita DeGracia, is Shanita DeGracia present?
Hi. Yes, I'm here.
We can hear you.
Hello? Okay. Good morning, county commissioner, madam chair, public official, general public. My name is Shanita DeGracia. I'm here to show my support for the amendment of the county's rate per solution. I'm in support of the county's rate per solution because the Water Resource Department is setting aside funding to connect 500 households per year to the county's sewage system. This is important to my neighbors and I because we believe, we have a special, we live in a special flood hazard area of planning country where we have septic tank systems. I purchased my home about a year ago, and immediately after I moved in, I noticed sewage smell and dark colors coming out of the water faucet in the kitchen, toilet, and shower. So I decided to have the septic tank clean and empty to try to solve the problem, but it did not. I contacted the county water resource department to see about connecting county sewage system in the neighborhood because all the neighbors that I have spoken with are interested in that too. Water Resource Department pointed out that the cost will be astronomical and will require a new sewage infrastructure in which no single household would be able to afford. I want to believe that environmental protection and infrastructure are priorities for the Board of Commissioners. Our wastewater collection system and treatment are major infrastructure assets for the community and the county. The major concerns are my community is in a special flood hazard area where rainfall from storms and hurricanes may result in floodwaters that are contaminated with sewage from septic tanks. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, household wastewater is loaded with disease-causing bacteria and viruses, as well as high level of nitrogen and phosphorus. If a septic tank system is well-maintained and working properly, it will remove most of these pollutants. Inefficiently treated sewage from septic systems can cause groundwater contamination, which can spread disease in humans and animals. Improperly treated sewage also possesses the risk of contaminating nearby surface and recreational waters. According to the floridahealth.gov website, in floodzone areas, traditional septic systems may, may not be sufficient to treat the wastewater and remove... may not be sufficient to treat the wastewater and remove harmful elements from the water before they can reach groundwater levels which we drink. Having a proper wastewater system promotes consistency with the rest of the county and removes responsibility of each homeowner to maintain the septic system properly. Septic tank systems are old-fashioned, so please consider voting in favor of the county's rate resolution and help to protect the health and quality of life of the hospital county's residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to our second and last speaker, I believe, Yumile Lawrence.
Yumile has not joined the meeting.
And do we have anyone else?
We do not.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to the, oops, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. And thank you, George, and your entire team for putting together an excellent presentation. And I want to say also a big thank you to working on a hardship program. The stormwater hardship program was very important, but the water, water resource program is also critically important to the success of our families that are on fixed income, people with disabilities. Those are frequently in a very difficult situation where they can manage their, the use of the water, but it's almost impossible to manage their daily expenses. To, to his point, though, the CARES dollars that have helped our residents during the pandemic are limited dollars. They're not necessarily recurring dollars, and they've been very helpful in making sure that those individuals had access to water. But on a long-term basis, we're able to, through the development of a complimentary hardship program with the stormwater, to use, hopefully, a one-time certification of eligibility to allow one application to apply to both programs. So I am thankful for the staff to develop a strategy to do that and keep it simple for our residents and customer service-oriented for our residents that are in need of assistance in making sure that they have access to the services that we provide. So I just want to say thank you and look forward to moving approval on this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. I would, thank you, Commissioner Overman, for your comments. I would just like to add that ask George to bring back the hardship program at the May 19 meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I think we can do that.
Okay. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Nobody likes raising prices, which may be why it hasn't been done for so long that we've fallen behind in keeping our rates up to a level that can keep our water and wastewater infrastructure up to the level we need in this county. And I very much appreciate the hard work that this administration and the Utilities Department has done with providing a study that really explains exactly what we need and where we're going to spend it. And thanks very much for that presentation. I think it's important to highlight that we have now also raised our impact fees on developers for water wastewater infrastructure and reinstated the AGRF fee that also provides water infrastructure capacity as development occurs. And we did that before we go out and ask our ratepayers for their share. So we are, we are fairly assessing what we need and, and just what we need. We don't make any money on this. As our, I was happy to hear we had a public speaker noting that we really need these funds to modernize our infrastructure. And at our February workshop on this topic, Commissioner Kemp spoke about ensuring that a sufficient portion of these funds will be used to finally bring Wyoma and Ruskin into the modern world by converting their low-pressure sewer systems to the same modern sewer system used in the rest of the county. And I'm very glad to see a commitment to this is included in the presentation and the backup materials. And also glad that we are looking at a discount for low-income residents like we have just instated for the stormwater discount, and that is the right thing to do. So I think we are moving into this very thoughtfully, very based on data and, and studies to show exactly what we need and what we'll spend the money on, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I just want to briefly agree with the statements that have been made by all of you. I think that this is a critical thing to do to ensure our future. This goes to the very core of our responsibility to our citizens. Nothing is more important than being able to provide water and sewer and all of the services that come with it. And I'm very comfortable that we are doing the right thing here for the, both the short and the long term in, in just dealing with a very critical issue and looking at it squarely, making investments everywhere that we can, and doing everything possible to ameliorate the impact on the neediest in our community. And I think that's also a very important component of where we're going.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, I think it was a year or 18 months ago or so, that we were asked to come in and make this leap for six years ahead. Two of the members here weren't even on the board, to vote for six years ahead, which and it was quite a large leap and with a few promises. So just a little bit of history, I really, at the time, fought very hard and said, "Until we bring back the AGRF, which is a major to build our water and wastewater resources, the AGRF fund," which was discontinued, it's about, it's an impact fee, about $2,000 per house, I think like 1,800 per home, had been discontinued in 2014. And over that time, we lost $100 million or more in that fee alone. Also, our water and wastewater fees had not been raised for who knows how long. They were about $3,500 for an average home. They went to now about $7,000. And on top of that, it was put on the homes bonded out by the county over a 20-year period at a 13% rate of interest that new homeowners had to pay for that over 20 years. And it was not, as it is everywhere in the state of Florida and Temple Terrace and Plant City and the city of Tampa, it was not just part of what you do to build a home in Hillsborough County. We have now changed that impact fee assessment. I'm a little disappointed that we still have the money that we decide to bond out in our last, our last time, but that being said, these were two things that I just said, "I'm not willing to move forward on this," even though desperately needed. I did believe it was desperately needed, until we get those things cleaned up and make sure that we have new development paying its fair share and we're not shifting that burden onto the homeowners, the people that pay, the customers of our water resources here in Hillsborough County. We have done that, and I'm very proud of this board and of our staff and everyone for moving that forward because I think that was, it was fundamentally unfair, and I would have never supported this under those conditions. That being said, I am very, I also insisted that we put in here, and I know other commissioners did too, something that has never been dealt with in decades in this county, and that's the conversion of septic to sewer and our low-pressure sewer system. I was an aide to Commissioner Castor here back in 2003 and 2006. I've said it before, it's one of the ways I got to know Commissioner Smith is because those Ruskinites and, and those people from Wyoma came up here and asked over and over again about their low-pressure system, and the response at that time was, "Oh, it's just fine. It's state-of-the-art." And it was not true, and we've needed to replace it and should have done it decades ago. That's a small part of it, the low-pressure sewer system in Ruskin and Wyoma, and it looks like we've got a five-year plan. I'm really pleased about the five-year plan to do that. We've needed to do that. And I noticed, and this is just one small critique of the presentation, is it said that one of the, with the low-pressure sewer system and the septic-to-sewer, it said "groundwater protection, environmental benefit." Yes, that's all true, all very important, but actually, our speaker even said this. It's a quality of life issue, as Commissioner Smith well knows, and as well, it's an economic development issue. We cannot talk about infill and by holding the line and redeveloping areas like Wyoma and Ruskin and the university area, and as our speaker, thank you, Ms. DeGracia, that was great, from Town and Country, said, "We cannot hope to redevelop and build good communities on top of a septic, you know, and well-water system in the urban areas." It's not possible. It's impossible. And, you know, this is a, I'm glad too for other new information Mr. Cassidy provided that I feel is probably much more accurate than the information we got before. To 26,000 actually is a lot lower number than I understood to be in the urban service area in the past. I'm not sure why, but, and maybe that was the number given, but 26,000 is a number for us to remember as we move forward, especially with the infrastructure money that could be coming. This is a critical infrastructure need for Hillsborough County. And as well, I'd like to say that I'd like to ask, and I asked Mr. Cassidy for this, and I've talked to Ms. Wise about this, about somehow a lockbox on whatever we've set. I know it's pretty de minimis on each bill to be set aside for the low-pressure sewer system and for our septic-to-sewour conversion so that in the future, that money just doesn't get, not that our current staff would do this or our current board, but that it always gets set aside, set aside until that is all handled. And I don't know how many decades that might take. I hope we can do it faster than that, but I'd really like it to be set aside and not integrate it with all the funds so that we can at least count on, on that amount as we move forward. And I don't know if anyone wants to speak to that for a minute, but I'm also, by the way, very comfortable with us being right in the mid-range on those other counties and everything else. I think that shoots for exactly where we should be. So I, I'm really pleased with the work that's been done on this, with the changes that have been made, with the direction we've gone in, and I know it was a big lift. So just to get the framework here, moving forward in a really great way for Hillsborough County. But I, I don't know, Ms. Wise, I maybe, can you speak to that a little? Just, I'm, I'm, would really like to make sure that that's done.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that what we do doesn't at all alter our bond covenants and any kind of accounting procedures so we can work with internal staff and the clerk's office to make sure that we do something that is protection. It still needs to be part of our calculation on our debt service coverage. We just don't want to go awry of anything of that nature.
I understand. And I just want to really make sure that that's there and preserved and that we move ahead in the most robust way that we possibly can and to, to just get rid of our low-pressure sewer system and convert as much as we can of our septic-to-sewour. And with that being said, and I see no one else, and I'd just like to thank Mr. Cassidy. I know he's worked really, really hard on this and Ms. Wise and everyone to bring this forward. Seeing no further discussion.
Madam Chair, who had the vote, who had the motion in the second?
I'm sorry?
Who had the motion in the second?
Commissioner Overman, you're going to make the motion?
Yeah, I may, I'm, I'm second.
Okay. Thank you. With Commissioner Overman making the motion, Commissioner Smith is a second there. And seeing no further discussion at this time, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Ms. Wise.
Okay. And thank you, Commissioners, and thank you to the staff who, as you mentioned, worked very hard on this, and you all have spent a lot of time on this, and we very much appreciate your diligence. The next item is item E1, 1015, the Emergency Management Operations Related to COVID-19 and the Local State of Emergency.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Yes, and so we'll start here with, this morning, with our emergency management update with Tim Dudley.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tim Dudley, Office of Emergency Management Director. I'll be providing you a brief update on current emergency operations. Hillsborough County testing update, last week, Hillsborough County averaged a little above 1,000 daily test collections. That's up 3.3% from the previous week. Our current testing sites for the county right now are still at University Mall and Lee Davis. We've seen the uptick at those locations after we closed the William Owens location last week. The vaccine task force update. The task force is currently assessing opportunities to promote the vaccine to those who have not already taken advantage of the vaccine sites. We also are looking at strategies to make vaccines more convenient, possible pop-ups at special events in high-traffic areas. Hillsborough County completed a point of dispensing at Tampa International Airport for critical infrastructure workers, including transportation, airport, utilities, and other groups. The site was open for five days. We will be returning to that location for second doses 7th through the 11th of May. The Plant City Stadium site completed first doses last week, and the team moved to Larry Sanders Sports Complex to bring additional vaccines to the Progress Village community. We will be returning for second doses at the Plant City Stadium, May 3rd through the 5th. An additional local government employee closed pod event was held last week. We will be returning for second doses May 6 at that location. We have vaccine appointments scheduled this week for Ed Raditz Park, Vance Vogel Park, T. Pepper Hospitality Center, and Larry Sanders Park. The state operations at Raymond James picked up last week and are currently administering nearly 3,000 doses per day. So we're happy to see that uptick in, in that valued resource. The state mobile team will be resuming administering the Pfizer vaccine later this week with joint recommendations from the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County. Previously, those state mobile teams were administering the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. The federally-supported vaccination site at the Tampa Greyhound track resumed first doses vaccinations yesterday with the Pfizer vaccine. We continue to see private pharmacies, providers, and other organizations in the community with access to vaccines setting up their operations throughout the county. And so far, as of April 17, we've had over 283,000 folks complete the vaccine series. That concludes my update. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. I don't see any questions here. We'll move to Dr. Holt at this time from the Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Dr. Doug Holt, Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. As you can see from my, my usual single slide that traces the pandemic over time, we are seeing an upslope, upslope in the number of cases that were being detected. Today, I'm excited to have Dr. Jason Salimi. He's an associate professor at the College of Public Health at USF to present an EPI report. You know, again, once again, we really benefit from having USF College of Public Health in Hillsborough County. They are the highest-ranked college of public health in Florida and top 20 nationally. And Dr. Salimi has created a nationally-recognized website with COVID data. I believe his insights and a comprehensive presentation will be of benefit to the board and the community. So with further, without further ado, Dr. Salimi, would you proceed?
Perfect. Thank you so much, Dr. Holt, and good morning, County Commissioners and Madam Chair. I'll try and keep this as brief as possible, but give a good comprehensive overview of where we're at with COVID-19 in the state. So the first thing I'll focus on is confirmed infections or what we call cases. And as you can see here by glancing at what we term the epidemic curve, we can clearly see that after a rapid descent from the surge during the holiday season, newly confirmed infections have been increasing of late. And so statewide, we're at nearly 6, 6,800 new cases per day as of data through this past Sunday, and we had about 2,000 fewer daily infections just four weeks ago. So that's a 44% increase in new infections in just the past four weeks. And in Hillsborough County, we're following And in Hillsborough County, we're following a similar trajectory. And right now, we're at about 517 new cases per day, and that's 1 in 13 cases that we observe statewide. And again, we had about 200 fewer daily cases just four weeks ago. So that's a 60% increase in new infections in the past four weeks. So this is a figure that I started to display on my dashboard because obviously the situation is not the same in every county in the state, nor in every age group that we see. So this basically shows for the 10 most populous counties in Florida and for each of five major age groups, how are we doing now compared to two weeks ago in terms of the daily number of cases? And so as you can clearly see here, everything that's in a reddish color are percent increases, everything that's in a bluish color are decreases. And if I would have shown you this figure two weeks ago, I would have been reporting that the most prominent increases that we're seeing is basically in the 18 to 49-year-old age group, and we were still seeing decreases or flattening numbers of cases in seniors. Unfortunately, as you can see by this figure, we're pretty much seeing increases across the board, including in our senior populations. And so when we see increases in new infections, we should always check what's been going on with testing. And so this is a statewide purview of testing. We often ask the question, are we testing more people because more people are returning to work and testing is required for work? Are we testing more people because more people are developing symptoms and are coming out to get tested? And so until last week, we had been pretty steady throughout March and early April, testing just under 100,000 different people per day. In the past week, that increased by about 10,000. But the big take-home here is testing or the recent increases in testing is not what's driving the recent increases in cases. That is to say, over the past four weeks, the increases in new infections has outpaced any recent increases in the viral testing that we are performing. And so we shift to positivity. This is based on a weekly report generated by the State Department of Health, which I prefer because it tends to only count people if a person is tested multiple times within a week, they deduplicate. So they only report on people once per week. So it removes, you know, a lot of these repeat negatives out of the equation. And so what, what this graph at the top left basically shows for the state is that after we had saw big decreases in case positivity, for the past five weeks consecutively, we have seen an increase in case positivity. And when we look at Hillsborough County in particular, we're seeing a similar trajectory. Unfortunately, the, the case positivity in Hillsborough County has been much higher than the state, most recently being 10.7% compared to 8% statewide. And as you can see on the map on the right-hand side, this is just a county-level purview of, of the most recent positivity measures for the most recent week that it's been reported for. And right now, Hillsborough County is basically one of only nine counties in which that weekly positivity rate was higher than 10%. And I think it's important to underscore because I think there's been some questions about this, because testing volume has been either the same or more recently has been increasing, it's likely not just because we are testing more symptomatic people that we're seeing increases in positivity, it's because we are seeing genuine true increase in community spread of the virus. And so it's important to also note that it's not just infections that are going up. We're actually seeing increases in illness severe enough to require hospitalization. And so we've seen a 22% increase just in the past four weeks alone statewide, and that's up 8% in terms of people currently hospitalized with COVID-19 from just one week ago. In Hillsborough County, here are the absolute increases in people currently hospitalized with COVID-19. And basically, the take-home is we're up about 54 people in just the past four weeks. And that number actually that I reported from April 19th, just a couple of days ago, 252, I just checked this morning at 9:00 AM, and we're now at 265, so even 13 higher. So i- it is important to mention that despite these increases in people who are currently hospitalized with COVID-19, as it relates to capacity, systems are operating normally. We're not seeing any sort of capacity issues. Here's a bit of positive news that demonstrates the effectiveness of vaccination to me. This information is from a federal report that's provided by state and it's provided daily by, by the Department of Health and Human Services. These are basically new hospital admissions for COVID-19 by age. And so what this figure shows is that among people who are newly admitted, the age distribution has been shifting towards younger ages. So in less than two months of information that I presented on this slide, the percentage of new hospital admissions that are among people 70 years of age and older has gone from 41% to 27%. So that's positive news to me, even though we don't like to see increased hospitalizations regardless of the age group. So let's touch briefly on vaccinations. These are trends in statewide vaccination rates by age. And so this just shows the immediate uptick in vaccination rates in the younger age groups as their ages became eligible for vaccination. You know, you can just look here and see where those people 16 to 40 years of age were newly eligible on April 5th, and you can see the marked increase in those bottom two lines as they increase in their trajectory as more people were starting to come out. It also, of course, shows a recent flattening of the curve among seniors despite there being nearly 1 million seniors statewide who have yet to receive any shot of a COVID-19 vaccine. This is just now a, a county perspective on our ability to vaccinate the elderly. So the numbers that you see within each county is basically the percentage of the resident population 65 years of age or older who has been vaccinated with at least one dose. And so Hillsborough County has successfully vaccinated four in every five seniors with at least one dose, and more than half of seniors in the county are estimated to have been fully vaccinated. And, you know, if you look at just the five largest counties throughout the state right now, they're all around the 80% mark as it pertains to seniors. Some important take-home details about vaccinations in our county specifically, right now, we're nearly at 500,000 people who are Hillsborough residents with at least one dose. And again, that's nearly four in five seniors. Nearly 300,000 people who are vaccine-eligible age have been fully vaccinated. And it's important to underscore that nearly one in three shots that are given in Hillsborough County are actually given to residents of other counties. I'm actually one of those. I'm a resident of Pasco County, but I got vaccinated in Hillsborough County. And so again, right now in Hillsborough County, availability and capacity are not the issue. The reason that I think we've seen some recent dips in terms of the doses that we've been administering is primarily demand. And so I think this next slide underscores that. During the past week, the doses administered have decreased compared to the past three weeks, and this has been mainly a decrease in first doses. If you just look at the, how, how big that orange bar is, those are the second doses. That stayed pretty consistent, but the blue portion of the bar, the first doses, is what's been going down. So it looks as though people are returning for their second shots of Moderna or Pfizer, but we, at least in the past week, had a dip in those people who are coming out and getting their first dose. And these are just, I won't, I won't belabor this, this busy slide. These are just projections, right? Based on what we've been doing in terms of the number of doses administered more recently, what does it look like? When will, you know, 50% of our population be fully vaccinated of those who are of a vaccine-eligible age? And right now, that best guess is at the end of May. We'll have 50% of people in our county 16 years of age or older who are fully vaccinated. But obviously, these projections can shift depending on how well we do with dose administration and how well we're able to do with getting people out to get vaccinated. And why it's so important with all of this update is it's estimated that now nearly two out of every three of all COVID cases in Florida are one of these variants of concern. And so to me, there are two big priorities as we look at this COVID-19 update. Number one is to remove barriers to all vaccine-eligible people in terms of their ability to get vaccinated. Number two is to bear down with mitigation efforts because when you couple relaxed mitigation with these increased prevalence of these more transmissible variants, it's likely that this is why we're not only seeing increases in cases in the past four weeks, but also increases in hospitalizations. And so with that, I'd like to thank Dr. Holt and the, the board for their invitation. I really want to also underscore the outstanding weekly reports that I received from Dr. Holt and his team concerning key COVID-19 metrics. And I do rely, even though I build my own state dashboard using publicly available data, I rely pretty heavily on the Hillsborough County COVID-19 dashboard, which I think is outstanding because it goes above and beyond the publicly available information that's provided by the state on metrics like actual new hospital admissions for COVID-19. So I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And thank you so much for that very great update of new information that we haven't received here before. I have a lot of questions, but I'll go to Commissioner Overman first.
Thank you. And yes, thank you very much for the update. I think it is important that we have some clarity on why, you know, the emergency still exists, why masks and, and precautions are still important. And I did have a quick question, you know, we had a caller say something, and I want to make sure I got the answer clearly in your presentation. The, if someone has been vaccinated, they still can get exposed to COVID, carry COVID, and share COVID, although it won't kill them because they've had a vaccination, right? I mean, is that, I mean, just because you've had a vaccination doesn't mean you cannot get COVID, especially with the new variants, and you cannot share it with your family members, your coworkers, and your customers. So I, I just want to get clarity from Dr. Holt, you know, or, or our speaker to, to answer that question because we heard that, you know, people don't need to wear masks after they've been vaccinated, and that is clearly not the case.
Right. So I think the, the CDC has actually been pretty clear on this. There's a, a big misperception among the public, understandably so, that once they get both doses of the vaccine, they're immediately protected. So the first thing that we should mention is the fact that not until 14 days after your second dose are you fully protected and realize the benefits. It is uplifting that CDC also reported that, you know, these vaccines are designed, as you alluded to, to prevent severe illness and mortality if you were to get infected, but they're also pretty effective at preventing you from getting, getting infected in the first place. But it is important, you know, CDC has been very clear with guidelines that being fully protected with your vaccination does allow you to be inside your home with other vaccinated people. If you have unvaccinated people who are of low risk, you can also be in your home and be maskless. But once you go out in, in the general public, yes, you, you can still get the virus and pass the virus along, and I think that's why anybody who is out in the public, whether they've been vaccinated or not, especially if they're in indoor settings, should still take appropriate mitigation strategies like facial coverings.
Thank you very much. And to follow up with that, is there a level of vaccination or, or immunity developed through, through actually receiving COVID? But is there a level of immunity that we're looking for, a vaccination level to look for, where it would appear as though the precautions we have put into place in Hillsborough County could possibly be mitigated or reduced in any way or shape or form? So I'm, I'm looking for the level of percentage of vaccinations necessary to consider making any changes.
Yeah, I, I think there's a, there's no hard and fast rule on an exact percentage. We're still learning a lot about this virus. A number that I hear more often than any other is 70% of a population that is fully vaccinated is where it becomes much more difficult for the virus to hop from person to person, and you start to reach what we, what we think of as herd immunity. And that's not just vaccinations, right? As you alluded to, people are also getting natural immunity from being infected to COVID in the first place. But I think that's the marker that we're looking at, and that's why it's so important to get as many people out, whether they're, they're younger or older or in a perceived high-risk group or not. The more people who are vaccinated, the less likely it is, especially with these more transmissible variants, we want to prevent it from hopping to person to person. So I'm thinking that's why you see a lot of these when we're forecasting, how long will it take us to get to 50%, 70%, 80%? I think 70% is the most common marker I see where we can start to feel more comfortable that the virus is going to have a more difficult time transmitting in our communities.
Thank you, Dr. Salimi. So it is maybe safe to assume, since our over 65 numbers are starting to creep up, that, that maybe they have reduced their precautions because they've gotten their vaccines and they're thinking they can go out without protections. And so we've seen an increase in infections in that age group, and that is a little concerning that we had seen a decline, and that's starting to creep back up. So thank you very much for your day today. I think it's critically important that our public is aware of what they're dealing with so they can make good decisions and be part of the solution for fighting this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cullen?
Thank you. And I, I really am going to stay on the same theme that Commissioner Overman was on, but, but I, I guess, it, you know, there's, it's very difficult to understand how 50% or so of the population is either partially or totally vaccinated. We have the mask mandate in place, and, and I know we're going to get all sorts of mail about it doesn't work and all that sort of thing, but the science shows that the masks clearly prevent transmission. We, we, every place I go, I see people adhering to very strict social distancing guidelines, or at least in a lot of places. And yet, our cases continue to go up. And it, it really is, is difficult to understand because it, it, it doesn't seem to, to match what you see on the ground. So I guess my question is, can you give us a little deeper dive into who is actually getting sick, number one? And, and number two, are we seeing an intrusion of these different variants of the virus starting to get into the community? Are we starting to see other, other forms of the virus that are driving these numbers?
Yeah, those are excellent questions, and I'll start succinctly with, with the take-home message is the likely increase in more recently is a combination, in my opinion, of relaxed social mitigation efforts collectively. You're right, a lot of people are doing right things, but I also think there is a massive amount of COVID fatigue. And I think, you know, with things like spring break and, and kind of more people wanting to get out there, I think there is a relaxation, relaxation collectively on the mitigation effort. But again, my last slide in the presentation, two in three new cases in Florida are one of these variants of concern, and we know that they carry a characteristic that they are more transmissible. And so even all else being equal with the same amount of mitigation, they do pass from person to person more easily. So it's probably a combination of those two factors. In terms of who is actually getting infected now, unfortunately, the answer is everybody. We're seeing increases in every age group. But I, I, I think it's also important, especially with the last board member's comment about seniors going out there who have been vaccinated and now are getting infected. I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think it's important to know that there are still 1 million seniors alone in Florida who have yet to receive one dose of the vaccine. And so what we've learned time and again, when we had the summer surge and when we had the winter surge, is you tend to see the increases in cases in younger people first, who we might think are lower risk, 18 to 49-year-olds. And then shortly thereafter, a couple of weeks pass, and we see increased community spread find our vulnerable populations. And when there's a million seniors who have yet to be vaccinated, there's still plenty of vulnerable people. So I think that's exactly what's happened again. This combination of relaxed mitigation efforts and the variants of concern being more transmissible, it first found the younger age groups and started to transmit into the older age groups more recently. It's just the big hope that because so many seniors are vaccinated and the more people that we can get to come out and get vaccinated, most people will be protected from severe illness and mortality.
Thank you. And I, and I think that really underscores how we just have to stick with the message, which is that we've got to keep this up a little bit longer. I know everyone is tired. We're all tired of it. Everybody is tired of it. But, you know, to get to, to the magic number, whether it's 70% or, or somewhere higher, it's going to take a little bit longer. And if we don't, if we don't sort of double down on our efforts and, and wear masks and observe social distancing, regardless of whether or not you've been vaccinated, we're just not going to get to the point of being able to lift these things. And we know everybody wants them lifted, but we've got to stick with it a little bit longer. And I mean, that to me is the clear message that's coming out of this, this information. And, you know, we're, we're on our way, but we're just not there yet. And it's, you know, it's challenging and difficult, and it's, it's, I know it's hard for people to understand. It's hard for us to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Salimi, I'm very pleased to have your presentation and information here today. I just, the, I have been, as others, extremely alarmed to see, we saw like, it was more or less like the side of a mountain, our rates going down as the vaccines dropped in in some countries that were able to do a more robust vaccine sooner, have seen their numbers go down to very small numbers of new cases. The fact that we dipped down like that, not to plateau out, but to actually rise up again, is, I think, truly alarming, both here in Hillsborough County and in, in Florida and in most of the nation. And it speaks, it seems, to the, as you've suggested here, the robustness in transmission, transmissibility of the COVID variants that are now out there. I guess the UK variant being really strong in the state of Florida. One thing in your presentation- One thing in your presentation that I think I noted was that it looks like our rates are especially going up among 65-plus, which really kind of surprised me, actually, I did not know that. But not, but also that they weren't really going up between 18 and 24, but under 18, that those were the two groups, under 18 and over 65, is that accurate?
That is accurate, and again, it's important to remember that these figures change all the time. You're always comparing to the most recent two-week period in this case because we're looking at recent change. If I would have shown you that graph, you know, the reason that you're not seeing pronounced increase in the 18 to 49-year-old group relative to two weeks ago is because that's when we saw really profound increases. So, you know, if we looked over the past four weeks, what you would see is increases in every age group, it just started with the younger folks, and now it's, you know, the pediatric population as well as the seniors.
So also, is it true that if you are vaccinated and if you wait two weeks out of your vaccination, I almost hate to bring this up, but that you can still catch COVID, you can still pass COVID on, you have that 5%, and that some people have been hospitalized and some people have unfortunately died even after the vaccine had their two weeks?
Yeah, these vaccines are incredible in terms of preventing severe illness and death, you know, that these things do happen, but they're exceedingly rare once you've been fully vaccinated. But you absolutely can, again, even though the vaccines are also pretty effective in preventing people from getting infected in the first place, you absolutely can get infected, you can pass along this to other people, and there is an exceedingly small chance that you will develop severe illness, but the possibility is still there. But I think it's still good, you know, the CDC is very clear on recommendations. There are a lot of additional things that getting fully vaccinated affords you, the ability to be in your house unmasked with other people, even if they're unvaccinated as long as they're lower risk. But when we're out in the general public, because we can still pass along the virus to others, and we are seeing increased community spread, it just underscores the importance of mitigation efforts. Because the thing that a virus does all the time is both replicates and mutates, and the real scare is, you know, we talk about these variants of concern, when we have high community spread, it gives the virus an additional opportunity to mutate and to come up with another variant that maybe our vaccines aren't as effective against. And so that's why it's really important, while we're urging people to get out and get vaccinated, we also want to urge them to try and bring down community spread because that's how we get back to normal.
So just a couple more questions. I just think many people still don't know, and maybe I'm wrong about this, that 16-year-olds can be vaccinated, 16- and 17-year-olds, and I don't know how much, you know, how many in that age group have gotten vaccinated. I know they need to go with their parents and have their parents with them to do that, but to me, it would seem like a really important age group to have vaccinated at this time. So I always take a minute to say that. But I also know that it looks like the 12 to 15-year-olds, the possibility of Pfizer being available to 12 to 15-year-olds might be imminent. Can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, I don't know exactly when those dates will occur. As you alluded to, Pfizer is available for those who are 16 and 17 years old, and of course, all three of the vaccines for anybody who's 18 or older, the clinical trials are still progressing. You know, when these things get done, when we start to see all of the results that come out, and when the emergency use authorization comes out, I don't know the exact timeline, but that's something that we're obviously monitoring because, you know, in order to prevent community spread of the virus and serious illness, even though the absolute risk in the pediatric population is smaller, one of the things we do is collect information statewide on people who have had, you know, pediatric patients who have had to go into the intensive care unit, who have actually died. So even though it's rare, it does happen, there are a lot of families that have been affected. And so if these vaccine trials are proven safe and effective for the youngest in our communities, they should go out and get vaccinated as soon as possible as well. So we'll keep everybody updated on when those dates come.
And just to be clear, is for younger people now getting it, we once heard, it was that they didn't, you know, catch COVID very often and they didn't get severely sick. We know that there were exceptions to that, many exceptions to that, including some deaths of, I just remember in particular a six-year-old girl here at the beginning in Hillsborough County. But are more younger people getting more severely hit by this when they do get it? Are they, we know they're getting it more frequently, or is the infection more severe when they get it?
Yeah, they're always placed in a high risk of exposure, so they're at a high likelihood of actually getting infected. COVID-19 is something that, you know, all else being equal, is an age-dependent disease in terms of your likelihood of experiencing severe illness. So it is lower for those in younger age groups, but it absolutely does happen, they're hospitalized every day, they go into intensive care units, and in rare instances, they do die. And, you know, the thing is, you know, we all know the importance of getting them back to school in person, and there was a recent study that actually came out, it was a CDC-MWR from authors at the Florida Department of Health, highly respected scientists, and they were doing some comparisons, and one of the take-home messages of their report is, you know, the absolute risk of a student getting it in schools is relatively small, but when they compared counties that were less likely to implement mask requirements in schools to those that did, they found higher transmission of the infection in the school setting. So I think it's just important to underscore that, yes, they're at high likelihood of getting infected, they can experience more severe illness, and there are plenty of things that we can do, even when they're in the school setting, to keep them as safe as possible.
Great, I have no further questions, and I appreciate all your information and all the latest update. And with that, I don't think we have, do we have anyone else under Kevin Wagner or anyone else to speak at this time from the county before we go to the county attorney? Okay, so we will move now to the county attorney, Christine Beck, with the extension of the emergency order.
Yes, good morning, commissioners, and in keeping with Florida statutes, we have prepared another draft order for your consideration to extend the local state of emergency for an additional seven days, and at this time, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion on that order.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Cohen and Smith, commissioners, and seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one, Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you, and Ms. Wise.
All righty, our next item is item F2, Commissioner Overman's item, 1045, to direct staff to investigate acquiring a parcel, 769 acres of the USF Northern property. With that, we can turn it over to Commissioner Overman.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you very, very much, I appreciate it. As you know, either through the backup of this item, the news, or as we heard in our public comment this morning, on April 1st, USF issued a request for information to develop the approximate 769-acre parcel comprised of the USF Gulf known as the Northern Property. Like any other project with a valued community partner such as USF, I envision working together to find a solution that's befitting of our shared commitment to sustainability, recognizing and honoring our indigenous peoples. I have heard from many students and distinguished faculty, some retired from USF for doing work and research in this area, who have spent many hours of research on this land, and would envision any solution would allow USF students to continue their valuable educational, archaeological, and environmental research on this site. I'm still hoping that we have one of those conversations and collaboration, but we need to be mindful of USF's procurement processes. Their RFI requires submissions by May 24th, and I want to make sure that USF and the community understand that we're serious about our interest in protecting critical parcels of environmentally sensitive lands. As you can see by the maps in the backup, this parcel directly abuts protected lands such as Lettuce Lake Park and Cypress Creek. The habitats on this site are considered globally imperiled habitats, specifically the sand hills and other upland habitats, which are extremely rare to find in an ever-increasing urban setting. In addition to its ecological significance, its historical significance is extremely important. There are significant archaeological artifacts and mounds of Florida's indigenous peoples on this property, first discovered in 1930s through the WPA digs on the site. It's only one of 11 across the entire state of Florida to have WPA documented research. This land is a gem and deserves to be protected, in my opinion. This item is about empowering our staff to investigate and to have conversations with the backing of the Board of County Commission. The letter of support, I'm asking, the letter of support is asking the ELAP General Committee to nominate and rank the property in accordance with their processes. So Madam Chair, I've invited Mr. Forrest Turberville to speak today with respect to the request and that I retain the floor after his remarks to make a motion. Mr. Turberville, are you available to speak?
I am, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'll just start off real quick with the nomination process itself. So there is a meeting this coming Monday, April 26th, of the General Committee. As of right now, this particular site is on the agenda. The way the process works is that now that the site has been nominated, formally nominated or will be, to the ELAP program, then the General Committee will review it, make a quick determination as to whether or not it meets the minimum qualifications for the program. In this particular case, I have no doubt that this site will meet that its minimum qualifications. At that point, the General Committee will formally request that the ELAP Site Assessment Team go out to the site, attempt to get authorization to access the site. We are able to perform assessments in situations where we're not able to access the site, so either way, we are going to perform an assessment. Once the Site Assessment Team finishes its work, at that point, they will go back to the General Committee with a recommendation. General Committee will then rank the site, that will be a numerical ranking according to eight different criteria. And once that occurs, which is typically at its October meeting, because the General Committee meets twice a year, March and October. Now, I have spoken with Jan Smith, who's the chair of our ELAP General Committee, and she has agreed that we can move the October meeting up a few months to earlier in the summer, if necessary, to address this particular site. But either way, it will have to go through a full site assessment and then come back to the General Committee for a final ranking. Once that's completed, the ELAP Annual Report is drafted. We are actually tweaking that right now and working on a final draft to bring back to the Board later in the year. And then once the Board of County Commissioners approves the final ELAP Annual Report, which will include this particular site and any other nominations, then at that point, the site is considered approved, and staff can begin negotiations if that's appropriate.
Excellent, thank you. I have one question before I provide a motion is, when I spoke with you earlier about this particular issue, just trying to figure out what was going on, I was concerned and puzzled by the fact that this may not have already been on our radar, or why it wasn't on our radar. And of course, when it's, a lot of it's called the USF Forest Preserve, I think we probably assumed that it was protected. Mr. Turberville, can you give us a little idea of the research you may have to address maybe those quandaries?
Right, so for two or three decades now, it's been considered as other public land on our ELAP map. I believe everybody within our organization thought it was preserved. Again, if you look at USF's 2015 to 2025 Master Plan, there are multiple areas within that Master Plan that states that the area is preserved, and it will not be developed. So there are some very definitive statements within that Master Plan. So that combined with the naming of the area, USF Eco Area, USF Forest Preserve, it's gone by several different names over the years. Staff always believed that it was protected because it was owned by the state, and all sorts of research projects were performed out there. The area was being actively managed through prescribed burning, exotic plant control, and the assumption was made, I think unfortunately wrongly, that this area was protected as an ecological research area for the university.
Excellent, thank you very much for your remarks and your comments and the research that you've done on this. And with that, I move to direct staff to, one, investigate acquiring this 769-acre parcel known as the USF Northern Property as described in the University of South Florida RFI 2021-01-GC through the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition Protection Program, or otherwise known as ELAP, or any other available funding resources. Two, to prepare a letter of support for the Chair's signature to the ELAP General Committee for its April Special Meeting to formally nominate this parcel and to rank it in accordance with ELAP's nomination and site ranking process. And then, three, to authorize staff to submit questions by the April 30th deadline for questions in accordance to the RFI documentation that's included in your backup, and respond to the RFI by the May 24th deadline. And that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was listening very carefully to the motion and the careful way that you worded it. The part that I really had questions about is the response to the RFI at USF. Can I ask Forrest, Mr. Turberville, for any comments he might have on how that response should be worded when it's presented to our chair?
Sure, well, my recommendation is that the response be fairly generic, express interest in working with the university to achieve the objective of preservation, in particular of the forested area. You know, there's two different components, there's the golf course and then the natural area that's immediately to the east of there. And express our interest in working with the university to achieve, hopefully, our mutual objectives of preservation. With regard to the ELAP program, we'll let that process play out as far as the site ranking, and then at some point, if there is interest on the part of the university to work with the county, to have the county potentially acquire the property or some other preservation arrangement, perhaps a conservation easement over the natural area, then we can work with that set of variables. I think we need to simply express interest and, you know, not necessarily get into the weeds or... weeds or specifics of an acquisition at this time.
Thank you. And I was also glad to hear, Commissioner Overman, that your motion includes investigating all funding sources and glad to hear that Mr. Turberville is on that same page. You know, whenever there's any talk about preserving environmentally valuable land, I am all in. And I've been involved with the ELAP program for a long time before I got elected. I've nominated thousands of acres for preservation myself, some of which has been preserved. And I sat on the ELAP Citizens Committee that we had this morning in front of us with our award ceremony, as well as participating in the ELAP Site Selection Committee for many years. And I've always been very proud of the rigorous process of review by which properties are assessed and ranked and prioritized for acquisition and preservation by our ELAP program. So, I want to just make sure that it's very clear to the public, as Mr. Turberville noted, that the nomination of this parcel would only be the first step in that process. And this nomination will go through that same process that every other parcel goes through in this county with several levels of technical review and ranking by various committees. Also important to note that ELAP is a willing seller program. So, any landowner, you know, I think when we talk about something like this, it's important that everybody understands that any landowner who does not wish for their land to be even listed as a possible ELAP candidate can keep their land off the list of possible ELAP purchases, much less acquired. We don't acquire anything without a willing seller. This parcel is largely wetlands, which cannot be developed, and the uplands include a golf course. And that is, I'm sure all of that will be carefully considered in the review and ranking of this parcel for ELAP. And so, you know, I think it's clear that in our, I think our response, any response to the RFI should be clear that we are, at this point, just investigating, reviewing, and wanting to work with the university and expressing our concern that the sandhill habitat might be lost and the wetlands might be impacted, and offering to help with any information, data, planning, and support services that might help them in preserving this land. But there are several ways to preserve land in Florida. There is ELAP in our county, and there are some land trusts that buy and preserve land. And first and foremost, the state can preserve land. That's especially easy for them to do with land they already own. And the state has a lot more money to spend on conservation than our county does. And the state has Florida Forever Funds that they use to purchase land for conservation. In fact, the state has preserved about 10 million acres so far, managed by 10 different state agencies and programs. And, you know, management is another concern. State agencies like SWIFTMUD and Florida Fish and Wildlife and Florida Department of Environmental Protection have the resources to manage the lands year after year after they are purchased. And we often partner with state funding and management agencies in our ELAP program. So, I think the ideal preservation solution for this site is for the state to continue preserving this site, which they own. And so, I will support the motion on the floor as presented and recommended by staff. But I'd like to have the floor afterwards for a subsequent motion.
Thank you. And with that, I'll recognize Commissioner White.
Well, ditto to everything that Commissioner Smith just said. I went over a lot of these issues in a one-on-one with Mr. Turberville yesterday. Much like Commissioner Smith said, I do not want to lose sight of the fact that this is USF's issue to navigate. This is a parcel that's currently held, you know, by essentially the state. My first question was about the proposed direction for the RFI, but that was answered by the previous two Commissioners. So, I just want to state for the record that I am supportive of a move to get the ELAP Committee to add this parcel to its approved list and give it a ranking, assign it a ranking. I am not so sure that I support acquiring this parcel fee simple. I am open to exploring the purchase of a conservation easement if USF is agreeable. But again, I cannot stress enough that USF needs to listen to the stakeholders, and it is USF's responsibility to protect this parcel if it determines that this is the best path forward. Simply put, I do not want our ELAP program, and I'm not going to sugarcoat this, I do not want our ELAP program to get hijacked by another public entity. And I urge Mr. Turberville to consider the fact that two of the most ardent supporters of our ELAP program on this board would like to proceed with a healthy dose of precaution on this. I am going to support the motion. I'm open to sort of this generic response to the RFI, getting it on the approved list, exploring options, but let's not lose sight of the fact that USF is a public entity. They're dedicated to academics and scholarly work. We've mentioned the archaeological significance of this site. We've mentioned the ecological significance of this site. First and foremost, it belongs in USF's wheelhouse under their umbrella. To the extent that they don't feel like they can maintain that for whatever reason, let's have a conversation with them. But let's view this as USF's issue first and foremost with the county, perhaps, as some kind of a willing partner, if need be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I see no other Commissioners' comments, but I would like to reiterate, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner White, the cautions that you have so well expressed that I certainly couldn't express more. I know for myself, I've attended here and there an ELAP meeting, and boy, the rigor and the, I mean, they don't miss anything by mistake. I don't think, it wasn't just because it was named Preserve, but there was no reason for them to go and even look at it because it was state property and it was being preserved actively. So, until there was something else put out there about it, it would be, you know, nothing to be looked at. But I could not emphasize more, it is state land. We have Amendment One where they haven't even been using those dollars to purchase state lands, much less almost making so few contributions here in Hillsborough County, where ELAP has really shown itself to be one of the, you know, most prolific preservation programs in the country. I think we have more acres that we preserved in the southeast of any county in the southeast locally, and whereas other counties in Florida get much more state and federal money for their preservation efforts. And this is really one, it is really one that needs to stay at USF and I think, you know, possibly a conservation easement. I don't know why they would want to all of a sudden sell this for development at this time. And as you stated, most of it is acreage, is wetland, can't be developed, period. But then there is, and there's the golf course that, you know, I don't know about, you know, whatever in terms of preserving or where we would be about that being included. But I just, again, I agree with you with every bit of caution that you've asked to exercise and just, you know, let, so the ELAP Committee understands, because they've been so careful about what they would move on to and what they would use these precious resources for that are given by the county. So, I appreciate all the caution that's been spoken to, and I'm sure that that will be exercised in the future by this Commission and by the ELAP Committee as well. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
And I want to thank both of you, or actually all of you, for really bringing that to the attention. That is part of the reason why the motion is so carefully crafted, because we do want to respect the process for all the parties. And we also want to recognize, you know, the fact that it is a state-owned property and then USF's move forward to do something and/or at least ask for information and develop a partnership in some way, shape, or form to what appears to be a valuable resource and an important resource within Hillsborough County. And so, with that, I ask for your support.
And seeing no further discussion by Commissioners, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. And I agree with every single word that Commissioner White said in this, and I'm glad that, you know, we're all kind of on the same page and that can be transmitted to the ELAP General Committee. It's important that this doesn't seem like we're putting our thumb on the scale in any way or sending any stronger direction. And in fact, from what I'm hearing, I feel like it's important that we, you know, prioritize and communicate that our priority is to find ways to help support in any way the state preserving this land without having to get into our small ELAP treasure chest, but possibly offer any, you know, onsite expertise and perspective that the staff and committees have in making that happen and our real estate history of preservation. So, you know, we might be able to offer help. And to that end, I would like to make a motion to authorize the Chair to send a letter to our state legislative delegation and the Speaker of the House and the Senate President and the Governor, as well as a similar letter to the university president and the Board of Trustees, asking them to preserve this site, telling them that we support the preservation of this site, and, you know, work with ELAP staff to word the letter to possibly offer any help, as I was discussing, that short of ELAP funding, but the kinds of support we could offer here or possible exploration of partnership in the future in management of the Preserve, anything along those lines. But I'd like to send that message by letter to the state and the university and make sure that, you know, possibly copy the ELAP General Committee, well, let's say certainly copy ELAP staff and committee so they see our position on that. That's my motion.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith. It was actually seconded by Commissioner White before she was like about a quarter through. So, I'll let that go. And seeing no further discussion, if you could please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We are back to the regular agenda. We are at Item B3. This is to true-up and realign currently appropriated monies from a 2021 bond issue. And Kevin Berkey will present this item.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. I think it's still morning. B3 is a budget amendment resolution for the wastewater.
Excuse me. Could we, could we get, Mr. Berkey, is there a way to get louder? Yes? Okay, we sound like we maybe have that? Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. B3 is a budget amendment resolution for the wastewater impact fee special assessment revenue bonds, Series 2021, in accordance with Resolution Number R2101, as amended and supplemented by Resolution Number R2123. This budget amendment will true-up and realign currently appropriated amounts to the full $70,565,487 in proceeds from the Series 2021 bonds and will provide monies for various wastewater capacity expansion capital projects, the payment of the cost of issuance, and to increase budgeted cost of, and to fund capitalized interest accounts, as well as realign currently budgeted amounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers and Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is Item B4. This is to select a ward and execute agreements for professional engineering services for traffic and road safety studies. And Scott Strowmer will present this item.
Good morning, Scott Strowmer, Procurement Services. Item B4 is asking a board to select a ward and execute three-year agreements with the four highest-ranked and best-qualified firms, Burgess &amp; Niple, which is formerly Icon Consulting Group, Johnson, Mirman, and Thompson, Kimbley, Horn &amp; Associates, and Timbal Oliver &amp; Associates, in the amount of $1 million each for ongoing and as-needed professional engineering services for traffic and road safety studies, design, and related work for the Engineering and Operations Department. This procurement was conducted in accordance with the Consultants' Competitive Negotiations Act, which takes into account past performance, experience, and other factors. In addition, the evaluation committee's careful consideration of each proposal, a separate technical review committee fully reviewed the proposals and provided the evaluation committee with a detailed assessment of the strengths and weaknesses for each proposer. In this case, the opportunity for proposers to receive bonus points by subtracting, excuse me, subcontracting a minimum of 10% of the ultimate fees to disavowing business enterprises was available, and all proposers, including the recommended firms, requested to receive those points. It's important to note that it appears that the second highest-ranked recommended firm, Burgess &amp; Niple, is a City of Tampa-registered minority business enterprise. The recommended firm's work will be limited to performing investigations and studies in response to customer service requests, which may require gathering traffic and pedestrian information for installation of crosswalks, stop signs, and other devices, traffic signal warrant studies that may include traffic volume analysis, review of crash data and roadway geometry, traffic signal infrastructure assessments to support capital planning processes, design of pavement markings, and evaluation of traffic signal structures may be damaged as a result of an accident. So, it's very confined work. With all of that, Procurement Services does recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Smith, and seconded by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thanks. Just a couple of comments. I dug into the details a little bit because it wasn't clear to me this is 1 million over three years for this. And, you know, I'm sure you saw in the backup how important some of these investigations and studies and evaluations are to our Vision Zero goals with, as well as customer service requests. But I was surprised to see, and I think it's important to note, that these contracts will be responding to an average of 1,000 to 2,000 cases a year in these analyses and reviews and, you know, crash data analysis, as well as, you know, roadway geometry to provide safer roadways for our citizens moving forward. So, I'm happy to support it.
And seeing no further discussion, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman. by Commissioner Overman. Is that, oh, thank you. And with that, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is item F1, Commissioner Overman's item relating to requesting the Chair's signature for a letter supporting the addition of $225 million of nonrecurring funds into Sadowski Housing Program. Commissioner Overman.
Ms. Fisher-Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I know many of you, as the Chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, we've been focused on high-priority items of affordable housing over the last year and added it to our priority list as far as our legislative items. I am also able to update you that both on the Senate and the House side, that Senate Bill 2025-12 was approved by both the House and the Senate side. But what is really interesting is that in this, where the Sadowski Housing Trust has always been swept just about, last year they didn't sweep, but then we didn't get it appropriated. So the effort of addressing our needs in the area of affordable housing has been frustrated over the years. But 2025 actually does something to the Sadowski Trust that we may see as a bad thing, but it is a way of addressing some severe needs in the state of Florida. Currently, the Sadowski allocation of the dock stamps were approximately $423 million statewide. And that has, as a consequence of the passage of 2512, been reduced towards affordable housing to an allocation of $209 million. So a little less than half is actually going to be utilized due to this passage of this bill towards affordable housing. And so, but given it's so critically important to our infrastructure, our economic success and development, our economic competitiveness, the, our local board's efforts, along with the Sadowski affiliates, have advocated to ask for $225 million in nonrecurring funding for this year's budget to add to the amount that would be remaining in the allocation of the dock stamp revenue. I have written to every one of the Senate appropriation members, the letter that's in your backup that I've asked for the Chair's approval, that we actually just got 2512 passed. So with that, we're still asking for the $225 million of nonrecurring funds into the Sadowski housing programs so that those funds can be utilized. And I want to make sure that everybody on the board is very clear. There's been a lot of talk about how Florida's going to get a bunch of money, a bunch of money, towards, from the American Rescue Plan and towards housing. And that is true, but it cannot be used for ship. It can primarily be used for housing assistance and utility assistance. It will not create additional affordable housing units. So I think we need to be very careful about assuming, because we've got federal monies coming, that it is going to improve our ability to create additional affordable housing resources. Here in Hillsborough, prior to the pandemic, we had a 54,000-unit shortfall of affordable housing units for individuals that were paying more than 50% of their income towards their housing cost. That's unsustainable for our families and our communities. So, and every dollar the legislature appropriates for housing, when it's leveraged with our efforts, is a six-to-one return on investment and a 40% return on investment in revenue back to the state. It creates potentially, the 225 million could create additional 19,000 homes across the state of Florida, could create 33,000 potential new jobs or additional job work, potentially generate $4.9 billion worth of economic impact, and return $167 million in revenue to our state and local budgets. So investing in affordable housing and investing in the Sadowski Housing Trust is critical to the success of Hillsborough County and its economic competitiveness and supporting our efforts to recover not only from the pandemic, but also to make sure that people have a safe place to live and don't get impacted by not having stability in their lives. So with that, I would like to ask for a board's approval to provide a letter to, for the Chair's signature to Senate President Simpson and Chair Stargill, as well as House, where is it? I just lost it. As a House, Chris Prowse, and I just lost it, I just lost it. Oh, I'm sorry, Honorable Jay Trumbull, to ask for additional in the budget process, which is happening this week. So this letter needs to go out today, to request the 225 million of nonrecurring funds to be put into the Housing Sadowski Fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Can I just ask too, can we send to the delegation as well?
Yes. I would like to authorize that as well, if we're able to do that to our local delegation, absolutely.
Okay, so we can consider that part of the motion and the second. Okay. And seeing no further discussion, sounds like, could I do to me? Please record your vote.
Thank you.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay.
Can I add that I actually did get phone calls back from Senator Simpson today while we were in our meeting? I started seeing the callbacks from all the phone calls I made. If you'd like to get telephone numbers and email addresses to write on your own behalf, I would encourage you to ask to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. And seeing, I think, Ms. Wise, we've completed the agenda.
Yes, just future discussion items.
Thank you for doing a good job on the agenda today.
We all, teamwork.
And we will move now to our future discussion items. I don't see anybody's, Commissioner Overman.
I just wanted to, it's not really a future agenda item. We talked about Earth Day earlier, so that's fine. But I also want to recognize that today is also Administrative Professional Day. And to all the administrative staff, the administrative help, to our legislative aides, you have literally been running around with your hair on fire for over a year. And I just wanted to personally say thank you and acknowledge the very hard work that we couldn't do. We would not survive without you. So I just wanted to make sure that we made mention of how awesome they are and how in service and in dedication, we do believe for you. So, and I'll stop there. Thanks.
And Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. At the African-American Museum and Cultural Center in our MBE program. The June meeting, June 1st meeting.
Okay. And with that, I, we all owe a debt of gratitude, I think, to the employees of Hillsborough County and the great work that's been done, not only on Administrative Day or Week, but all the time because it's just been a really, as we said this morning, kind of heavy lift that's been out there. So that's great. So thank you. And with that, we will adjourn at noon exactly.